Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the School Board Regular Meeting and meeting for the Manatee Leasing Corporation, January 30th, 2024. I want to begin our meeting by, I know it's on the agenda, but I'm adding it, wishing our board member, Ms. Bray, a very happy birthday.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. We should have put that in the agenda, everyone's saying, but move on to the reading of the District's Vision by Ms. Foreman, and also the invocation introduction.
The School District of Manatee County will be an exemplary, student-focused school system that develops lifelong learners to be globally competitive. And I'd like to introduce Reverend Randy Wilkins from Gulf Coast Church. He's their youth pastor, and welcome.
Yeah, we can all stand.
Gracious God and source of all wisdom and understanding, we come before you today with hearts filled with gratitude for the privilege of serving our community through education. As we gather for this school board meeting, we ask for your guidance and presence to be with us. Grant us, Lord, the wisdom to make decisions that reflect your love and compassion for all students, educators, and families in our district. Help us to lead with humility, seeking not our own agendas, but the well-being and flourishing of each individual under our care. We lift you up, oh God, the challenges and opportunities before us. Give us courage to confront injustice, strength to pursue excellence, and perseverance to overcome obstacles that hinder the fulfillment of every student's potential. And finally, oh Lord, we commit our work into your hands, trusting in your providence and seeking your blessing upon every endeavor. May our decisions today reflect your wisdom, our actions manifest your love, and our lives bring glory to your name. And it's in the name of Jesus Christ, our teacher and redeemer, we pray. Amen.
Please stay standing as we welcome in the Southeast High School color guard, members of the color guard are Megan Martin, Anna Perez Lopez, Valerie Enriquez Vega, and Jimmy Geronimo Lopez.
Others?
Oh.
Ace?
Ace.
A, E, others?
Order, others?
Ace?
Oh, arch.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. The Chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on January 30th, 2024, updated January 26th, 2024, and posted to the district website, manateeschools.net. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Still moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Seeing no board members that up to comment, we will go ahead and approve the agenda. That passes five to zero. Item number seven, approval of the minutes. Superintendent Wyson.
Good evening, Chair Choat and board members. I recommend approval of the minutes from the school board meeting of January 16th, 2024.
Still moved. I'll second.
Granicus is stuck.
Yeah, it looks like Granicus is frozen. But we have a motion, a second. No comments on the agenda, I mean, on the minutes.
There we go.
Yep, Ms. Bray motioned, Foreman second, and approval of the minutes passes five to zero. Brings on item number eight, Student Celebrations and Recognitions, Mr. Barber. Floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members, and Dr. Wyson. Let me just get my glasses real quick. We have two really special, good news items to share with you this evening. And the first one that we're going to share has to do with a recognition about a family and a former graduate of our schools who has really taken it upon themselves to do something very special for our students during the holidays. So to tell us more, I want to introduce you to the person who really makes the district's good news page work and works so successfully that other districts around us are now starting to imitate that good news page. So please welcome our communications specialist, Melissa Parker. Melissa.
Thank you. That was very kind of you to say, Mr. Barber. Board Chair Choat, board members, Dr. Wyson, thank you for having me. Ten years ago, a Southeast High School graduate made it her mission to teach her sons a real-life lesson in giving. Working with the school district's social workers and staff, she began a community campaign to provide Christmas gifts for those in need called Every Child Is Worth Something. As you can see from the photos playing on the monitors above, the amount of giving grew just as quickly as the boys did. In 2013, Kendra and her family provided gifts for four students at Sammason Elementary. In 2023, they brought joy to 75 students with wish lists from two schools and the migrant education program. They also donated toys, pajamas, and socks to three more schools, and set up a massive Santa's workshop with 585 toys in total at Palm View K-8, so every student received a gift to take home. The Wingates have recruited their friends, Southeast High School alumni, youth sports groups, Girl Scout troops, and more to join in the celebration. From shopping to wrapping and delivering gifts, this grassroots effort wouldn't be possible without the Wingate family, their friends, and community members who donate and take part in the magic each year. Kendra and her sister Erin, who joined us tonight, are the daughter of two retired Manatee County educators, Mike McCann and Dara McCann, you may recognize their names, the Wingate sons, Colt, who's here tonight, and Hunter, who's playing baseball, just made the team at Palmetto. I'm very proud of him. He is at Palmetto High School as a junior. It's now my honor to introduce Kendra Wingate and her family.
Thank you, Melissa, for the kind words. Melissa and I graduated together from Southeast High School and have maintained a wonderful friendship. What started out as a mom trying to purge her son's toy box has blossomed into something beyond my wildest dreams, a group organically growing each year called Every Child Is Worth Something. Ten years ago, I wanted to teach my boys about the gift of giving, to share with them that not every child is as blessed as they are. My boys attended Wakeland at the time, which is now Johnson K through eight. It's an IB curriculum that teaches traits, one of which is caring. I try to instill that in both of my boys every single day. So after brainstorming, I reached out to my parents, Darren and Mike McCann, both Manatee County employees at the time. I asked my dad if it was okay to reach out to the boys' school to see if possibly a family was in need. My father replied, "I have something better." That year, I took on four families from Sammason Elementary. Backed by friends and amazing community, a few families turned into over 1,000 kids in the past 10 years. The group has grown tremendously, all brought together by connections on Facebook, Facebook friends, neighbors, strangers, baseball teams, organizations, and businesses. This year, I can't even begin to explain the generosity I received from strangers, strangers that, without knowing me, were superstars. I have been touched by helping over the years Sammason, Wakeland, Bayshore, Johnson, Palm View, Horizons Academy, and Manatee County Migrant. This past December, I also added Ballard, Tillman, and after seeing a needed post on Facebook, I picked up Ashaw as well. This past year, I wanted to do something different, but still sponsor families. See, I was drawn to Palm View Elementary. The administration was amazing. The teachers were so thankful and kind, and the kids, well, let's just say, every time I left, it was with a tear. I came up with an idea of a whole-school party, a whole K-through-eight school-wide party. To be honest, I asked myself several friends, can I even do this? But I felt comfortable knowing our community and amazing friends, I can make it happen. Through an Amazon wishlist I published, hundreds of community members started sending gifts. We shopped till we dropped, 10 shopping carts full at Walmart. Altogether, we pulled off donating 585 toys. Not only was I able to donate a gift to each child, I had Carousels, ice cream there. Every child and teacher received a sweet treat, thanks to the donations of GSD Construction. To say that day was amazing is an understatement. Tears again as a little girl was the happiest to hug a simple teddy bear, a little boy thankful for a scooter, and middle-school kids loving Legos, crafts, and sports balls. See, over the years, my group not only grown with donations, but donations from organizations as well. When COVID hit, the Hernando de Soto crew was looking for ways to get back into our community. That year and every year since, the pirate ship has been blasting music, coming through my house development, and helped me loads all of my gifts onto the ship, and we deliver them together at all the elementary schools. My great friend Lindsay, with DDS Miracle Minis, brings her mini therapy horse, Mr. Pickles. Mr. Pickles dresses up like Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer. And yes, Mr. Pickles did take on Bradenton Walmart and helped shop for the toys. If, Bradentucky is what every shopper said. If there's one group I cannot forget, it's the Girl Scout troop that has been with me from the beginning. These girls are Manatee County students who meet at the Girl Scout house. My boys and I bring the gifts, and we magically transform it into Santa's Village. They wrap all of the presents, ready for delivery. Last but not least, I wanted to thank my family. Thank you for walking over boxing, stubbing your toes on toys, helping sort, pack, and deliver. My boys not once in all these years have asked for a toy that was donated. They saw the reality of it, kids asking for warm clothes, underwear, school uniforms, sneakers, coloring books, Barbies, Legos, and outside play. My boys have learned that life may not come easy for some kids, and it's not their fault, because every child is worth something. Thank you, Board, for allowing community outreach. Our Title I schools are in need of more support than ever. I have learned and have spoken to many families, and not two stories are alike. Thank you for giving, thank you for allowing the Giving Tree with the county system as well. It takes a village, it takes a community. I feel privileged to support the community that we live in and look forward for a more exceptional year. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Did we ask how to contact her to make donations?
Yes, can, we got one question.
Yes.
And.
How, how do people get in touch with you to make a donation for Christmas 2024?
Well, I already have some schools set up, because there are a few schools that don't have the support of the Giving Tree like others do. So normally, what I do is in October, when schools reach out to me, I start a sign of genius. I want to make it a way that everybody can donate. So if you can pick a whole family, if you can pick two out of four, if you could pick one child, if you could pick an item, everybody is able to donate. So we have that option, and then we have the option of a GoFundMe, which this year I'm actually going to turn it into a 501(c)(3). So there'll be ways to donate that way as well. Yeah.
Give the name of the Facebook group.
And it's Every Child Is Worth Something is the name of our Facebook group.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much, Melissa. And it's just great to see how, especially former graduates of ours, take an interest in the school district and want to give back. And so it's an excellent thing to see. This next, it's a student celebration, and it's good news, and I'm going to focus on the good news. There's a little bit of bad news mixed in, but I'll explain that to you. Okay. So we're here to honor the School District of Manatee County's Sunshine State Scholars. Sunshine State Scholars is a special program through the Florida Department of Education in which Florida school districts select their premier 11th-grade students in the areas of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. The students were nominated by their high schools based on requirements that include having a weighted GPA of 3.9 or higher, an interest in STEM-related studies, and a desire to pursue post-secondary education opportunities in Florida. Scholars were selected for their outstanding achievements and dedication to STEM studies and related extracurricular activities. The Sunshine State Scholars and their parents will travel to Orlando for a program designed to bring together scholars from around the state and connect them with employers that specialize in STEM fields, and create networking opportunities between the scholars and schools from Florida's college and state university system. And that event takes place in Orlando, May 2nd through 3rd of this year. Okay, our three scholars, and we were planning on having two of them here tonight, and high school students, as it turns out, are very busy and, you know, have a lot going on. Turns out, I have here Carl Ackerman, the principal at Braden River High School, and Sharon Scarborough, the principal of Manatee High School. The reason I have them, because these are our Sunshine State Scholars. The first one is Sheena Karakula of Braden River High, and then the second one is Amy Liu of Manatee High. We also have an alternate, and that's Caleb Wilford. Now, if you look up on the sheet, that's Sheena, and she's again from Braden River High, and Amy Liu from Manatee High, and then Caleb Wilford. I'm sorry, it's Calum Wilford, Calum Wilford. But as I said, we, they were scheduled to be here. I don't know, I think this is the first time I've ever worn a sweater to this meeting. I will not do that again. But we do want to honor these students, because they've been selected as, you know, just superior students in the STEM field. So I want to give each principal just a moment to say something about their students. So Carl, you want to?
Sure. Good evening, Chair Choat, board members. Dr. Wyson, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. It's a great day to be a Braden River Pirate. Our students that are represented here tonight are outstanding young folks. They make the Pirate Nation very proud. Sheena is an outstanding student. Sheena and Calum both are members of our TSA and officers in that, in that organization, and they make us proud every day. And they'll soon be going over to the state TSA competition in February. So we're excited to see the results that they bring. But we're happy that they're representing Braden River. Very proud of all the work that they do and will do, and their futures are extremely bright. I would like to point out, I think Ms. Wilford is here in the back, so we would like to give her props for Calum. Again, it's a great day to be a Pirate. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Thank you.
Thanks.
Chairman Choat, board members, and Dr. Wyson, thank you for taking the time to recognizing our students. Since we are such a student-centered organization, it's wonderful to see this opportunity. For Amy Liu, she's unable to be here in her parents, because they're local business owners who run a restaurant not far from here. I can't plug them right now, but I'm sure that she is not only working tonight, but studying on the side. But I want to read for you a little bit about what Amy spoke about. She is involved in our medical academy and STEM classes, as well as in the healthcare field. She participates in our HOSA, which is our health occupation. So she just participated in district and regional this past weekend, and will go on to state, I am sure, based on her past record of being in the STEM fair at the local and state level, as well as HOSA. So this is from Amy, her words. "As I grew up within the four walls of my parents' restaurant, I have been determined to find ways to give back to my community, just like how the community has given back to my family, with my passion of biology. I aspire to become a future health professional with an emphasis on public health. Additionally, I would eventually aim to become a professor at an academic institution to continue my passions." So thank you all. On behalf of Amy and her parents, thank you for the support of Manatee County, and we look forward to her coming back as a doctor for all of us someday. And as always, go Canes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I really want to thank Principal Scarborough and Ackerman for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you both. All right, that moves us to item number 10 on the agenda, which is public comment. And we'll go ahead and move to our first public comment. Before we do, I guess, I mean, there's a lot of new faces in public comment. Just remember that our board policy, we don't respond to public comment. So I know sometimes public commenters are looking for us to respond, and we don't. Our board policy is to not respond while you're, while you're giving your public comment. So just be aware of that. First, we have Celine Charleston, and followed by Abby Odell. So Celine, if you want to come on up. Okay. No, Celine. Abby Odell, come on up, followed by Heather Wallace. And just so you know, yeah, above you is your timer.
Okay, perfect.
Perfect.
All right. Hello, good evening. I just wanted to take a moment. My name is Abby Odell, and I'm here representing Turning Point High School. I just wanted to speak today about our student-led educational club, and maybe get some people interested, and also answer any questions that you might have. Turning Point USA is a nonpartisan, education-based, student-led club. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and we are active on over 3,500 campuses across the nation, including Bradenton Christian School. Our mission is to find students who love America and educate them about the importance of freedom, free markets, limited government, and the Constitution. We empower students to make a difference in their communities, and we equip them with the knowledge to do so. We also host conferences and events to train and inspire students to grow and sharpen their own beliefs. If you have any interest in starting a chapter, any questions, or getting some more information, please see me after. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Heather Wallace, followed by Chantel Wilford.
Hi, Board Superintendent.
Hi, Board, Superintendent, Chair, did you get the packets?
We did.
Yes, we did. Okay, and am I getting, I did sign up twice, just so I get the heads up. Is it just once or twice? Because it could be an instructional update, too.
I believe once.
Okay, I respect the decision of the Chair.
You can come back.
I can come back a month from now, because you only have meetings at five in a month. So those of us that work cannot come, but that's okay. You know how to reach me, feel free, a month. Okay, with that, welcome. See, I already have 30 minutes down.
You can, you can reset it to three minutes.
Thanks. Sorry, let me dial back, because I, nobody's here, nobody here has done anything wrong. It just is what it is. Okay, hi. As you know, we've been communicating for a while about the mandatory mental health curriculum, and so I have several concerns. I loved the prayer. It reminded us to make decisions that put the needs of students in our care first. My primary concern is that this has hurt children and has the potential to hurt more. I understand the importance of mental health. I think what this law is doing and how we're implementing it is irresponsible. Okay? It is a preventative curriculum. One thing we do in the classroom is differentiate instruction. There is no differentiation. In high school, when you are giving a curriculum, suggesting that students listen to their inner voice, protect themselves, you can revictimize children who have already been abused. It makes it sound like it's their fault, and they're in a classroom with 35 or 40 other people. Okay? You have other students who are harmed that are not necessarily been abused, but this instruction, we preach bell-to-bell instruction. We do our very best to do that. You're going to take six class periods and give an instruction that a student is not going to be assessed in. So my primary function is to teach the core. So those of you who, you know, probably ran most recently, I remember three of you saying, we want to focus on the basics. That's what I do. I teach core subjects. The students need them all for graduation. I do my best for the last 28 years to make it happen. Teachers are evaluated on it. You're going to give up six hours of instruction for some students who are going to take the same AP Economics, AP US Government, ACE History, or AP Art History, and they're going to be evaluated by the kids who got those six classes. Not appropriate. Okay? Next, we have statutory concerns. I understand some of you are like, we have to follow statutes. I get it, but as a board, it's your responsibility, if we have laws that have unintended consequences, it's our responsibility to step up and tell people. Those that giggle at me for being naive because I still believe, go ahead. I still have hope, and I'm not looking at you that you've done that. You have not done anything wrong. This happened before you were superintendent, but one thing we can't do in the classroom is hot potato the problem to somebody else. The problem is here, this board did not approve it. It was discussed at a workshop, but you do not vote on things at workshops. This community has been clear. They want to know the curriculums we're teaching. So up until two weeks ago, it was not posted on our website, so we already violated the statute. If this curriculum was used, which it has been, you were in violation. So thank you to the curriculum team, you did a good job. Lori Breslin, okay, all right, so I can come back, because I have solutions. I don't complain without solutions, but a month.
Ms. Wilford?
Were they going to talk about Sheena?
Oh, no, we'll get it, once we get the comments. Yeah, because we're in the middle. Thank you for thinking about that, though. Yeah? No worries.
So, first of all, I'm here because my son was one of the Sunshine Scholars, so thank you very much for recognizing them. I'm sorry he couldn't be here because he is sick. So I had signed up for public comment for the reason that I would be here anyway, but I'm a substitute teacher in the district. My name is Chantel Wilford. Specifically, I'm a daily substitute, so that means that I earn $110 a day. I'm currently on the final stretch of a 59-day assignment. When I was selected and trained, it was for a long-term subposition for this elective, non-core, non-state-tested course, Technology and TSA, which my kids have been involved in for 11 years. The requirement was a bachelor's, and long-term pay was $150 a day, which would kick in after 20 days. After I was assigned the job, trained by the teacher in her classroom, and subbed for her for several days, and shortly before she was due to have her baby, I was notified that I was not approved, because the district now requires state certification in the subject field. Neither the teacher, nor the school, nor ESS was notified that this policy changed, and they were stunned. So this is not the case in other districts, and according to my conversations with the state, this is not state-mandated, it's a district decision. Some counties prefer certification, some require it if the substitute is there for more than half of the school year, but that is not the case for maternity leave. So I, too, would prefer to have certified teachers in all of our classrooms all of the time, but the fact is that many are teaching out of field, and very few are lining up to be paid $110 a day for what is now 30 school days, according to the new policy. So the district saves some money having me as a daily sub, and I lose around $1,500 on this assignment, but it's not just about the money, it's about the additional burden on other teachers, staff, and administrators. So I want to stress that they've all been fantastic, but it is frustrating for us all because daily sub access to tools is limited. Somebody has to print out eight sheets of paper every day so that I can take attendance, and then somebody else has to input it manually, because I can't access Focus. I can't print worksheets from the lesson plan, staff has to do that. All my grading has to be imported by admin, which is extremely time-consuming. My referrals have to be processed differently than through Focus. I can't access Land School, because license fees aren't paid for daily subs. I've come in early for parent-teacher conferences. I come in early to open up the tech lab for students, because that's been a benefit to my own kids. So in brief, you know, I do a lot of the things that short-term, that long-term subs do, but without the tools or the pay, so I would urge you to reconsider the, this new policy to make it better for our students. Thank you.
Next is Marie Masfer, followed by Shannon Keever.
All right, I've talked many times in front of the Board about books. Tonight, I'm glad so many of the previous commenters actually mentioned children and what we are here for, and so I want to talk about kids tonight. Tonight, there's a child who's thinking of killing themselves. There's a child who believes they're the only one who's been abused or bullied, mistreated. The policy you adopted recently will not keep them safe, and it will not provide them the tools that they need to thrive in our classrooms. I want to share with you a story of Aiden. Aiden is an evangelical Christian and a Boy Scout. At scout camp and his high school, he's teased and bullied and called homo. Then he has a dream that he's attracted to another scout, and he wakes up terrified. He believes his father will disown him, his mother and his siblings will never speak to him again, as well as his friends at school. So he goes to the chapel at the scout camp, and I just want you to know, I picked, I chose this and to say this, because I come from a home of two Eagle Scouts, and I am a devout Christian. As he's going to the chapel, he takes out his scout knife to slit his wrists. And his spirit, his soul, and for me, I believe it's the Holy Spirit, comes to him inside that chapel. Now, this is what he says. "I have no time. She left me when I needed her most." He's talking about his best friend. "I'll be in high school soon, and I won't have anyone to talk to. They'll mock me and beat me, and every day. Why not leave now instead of prolonging the pain?" The spirit says, "Could you watch your mother from the other side weeping for the rest of her life? Would you leave the twins without a big brother they look up to? Will you leave them too scared to grow up? But my father, he doesn't love me." The spirit says, "Yes, he does. You can't see it now, but you know he does. Just remember." And that is a graphic novel by Mike Curato. It's been banned across the United States. I don't know that there was a copy in Manatee County, but because of the name of the book, Flamer, it possibly could have been. And the reason I chose it is because I'm here for every child in Manatee County. Each child deserves to hear their story. So for every child who has seen their stories disappear from the shelves in Manatee County libraries, you are not alone. You are important, and God loves you, and I urge the Board to reconsider their policy and operate in the sunshine, because parents should have just as much rights as principals. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon Keever, followed by Valerie Lipscomb.
Good evening, my name is Shannon Keever. Sorry, my name is Shannon Keever, and I am with Women's Voices of Southwest Florida. I'm a resident of Bradenton. My oldest daughter is a graduate of Braden River High School, and my younger children are registered homeschool students in Manatee County. I am here just to share some of my thoughts about things that I've been reading and seeing going on with the school, in the school board. First off, a quote that comes to mind is a librarian named Joe Goodwin said that "A good library will have something in it to offend everybody." And I think that that is a really strong point to make, that we don't have libraries to be echo chambers to our personal thoughts and beliefs. We have libraries so that we can explore outside of our own experiences and thoughts and beliefs. That is a vital part of education. It's concerning to me to read that a school board member has perused a couple of graphic novels and determined that they're not worth the paper that they're written on. That tells me you really haven't read them. I mean, they're not my cup of tea, honestly, they're not my personal favorite, but they, kids right now, they are entranced by them, they love them, they, and as you've read, or just as you heard from what Ms. Masfer just read, they can be very deep. There's a, they have a lot of literary value. So just to say that about an entire genre just tells me that you're not really putting a whole lot of thought or consideration into what you're taking out of schools, giving the principals determination over just removing books. And it seems to me like you're just not really doing your job, you're doing it to be, because you don't really feel like putting in the work that the law requires to you to actually review each one of these books fully, read the whole thing for literary value, and talk with students about the kind of value that these books bring. There are some books in there, not every book is for every age group. I mean, not, not every book that belongs in a high school belongs in a kindergarten classroom, I understand that, but I was molested by my grandfather for five years when I was a child, and I actually wrote a speech about it in eighth grade and spoke about it in school after the court case and stuff. I mean, there's books, it was helpful to other people who have been through the same thing. It was, it was helpful for me to be able to read books about other people who have been through the same thing, and those were books that I got from my class, my libraries. So thank you for listening. I hope you guys can do better. Thank you.
Valerie Lipscomb, followed by Joanne Telesco.
Hi, I'm Valerie Lipscomb. I've lived in Manatee County and Bradenton for more than 25 years, and my two daughters graduated from Manatee High. Go Canes! I've known Chad for I don't know what, over a decade at least. And I'm here as someone who is concerned about the number of books that have been removed from Manatee County shelves and the manner in which those books have been removed. I am a big supporter of the freedom to read, and I believe in and trust the professionalism of our librarians, our specialists, who are trained in how to curate books that are appropriate for our students. And I believe in the parents' voices and their ability to, to be involved in that process. I was a member of SAC at Manatee High when, when my kids were there. So in the spirit of encouraging everybody to, to exercise that freedom to read, I'd like to continue today's Manatee Read-In by using the remainder of my time to read a little bit of a banned book. A Pulitzer Prize winner called Beloved by Toni Morrison, the first black American woman to win the Nobel Prize. This happens to be one of my favorite passages. "Setha climbed off a wagon, her newborn tied to her chest, and felt for the first time the wide arms of her mother-in-law, who had made it to Cincinnati. Who decided that because slave life had busted her legs, back, head, eyes, hands, kidneys, womb, and tongue, she had nothing left to make a living with but her heart, which she put to work at once. She became an unchurched preacher, one who visited pulpits and opened her great heart to those who could use it. In winter and fall, she carried it to AMEs and Baptists, holinesses and sanctifies, the Church of the Redeemer and the redeemed. Uncalled, unrobed, unanointed, she let her great heart beat in their presence. When warm weather came, Baby Suggs, followed by every black man, woman, and child who could make it through, took her great heart to the clearing, a wide-open place cut deep in the woods. After situating herself on a huge rock, Baby Suggs bowed her head and prayed silently. The company watched her from the trees. They knew she was ready when she put her stick down. Then she shouted, 'Let the children come,' and they ran from the trees toward her. 'Let your mothers hear you laugh,' she told them, and the woods rang. The adults looked on and could not help smiling. Then, 'Let the grown men come,' she shouted. They stepped out one by one from among the ringing trees. 'Let your wives and your children see you dance,' she told them, and ground life shuddered under their feet. Finally, she called the women to her. 'Cry,' she told them, 'for the living and the dead, just cry.' And without covering their eyes, the women let loose." I encourage you to read the whole book.
Thank you. Joanne Telesco, followed by India Miller.
Hello, my name is Joanne Telesco. I'm a resident of Manatee County, Bradenton, Florida. I'm an educator, and I've been a media specialist for 15 years. I wanted to take just a few minutes today to share some of my favorite novel quotes with you. "When Salva thinks he cannot go on, Uncle points ahead to a bush and tells Salva, 'Do you see that group of bushes? You need only to walk as far as those bushes.'" And that's from Long Walk to Water by Lynda Sue Park. "Life is a million different dots making one gigantic picture. And maybe the big picture is nice, and maybe it's amazing, but if you're standing with your face pressed up against a bunch of black dots, it's really hard to tell." It's one of my favorites. Liar and Spy by Rebecca Steed. And this one. "Shall I tell you the secret of true love? Her father once asked her. A friend of mine liked to tell me that women love flowers. He had many flirtations, but he never found a wife. Do you know why? Because women may love flowers, but only one woman loves the scent of gardenias in late summer that remind her of her grandmother's porch. Only one woman loves apple blossoms in a blue cup. Many boys will bring you flowers, but someday you'll meet a boy who will learn your favorite flower, favorite song, and favorite sweet. And even if he's too poor to give you any of them, it won't matter, because he will have taken the time to know you as no one else does. Only that boy earns your heart." And that's Leigh Bardugo, Six of Crows. These are just a few of my favorite quotes. These are lines from books that, years after reading these books, still hold a space in my heart and my soul. There are words that I have referred to at different stages in my life, there are words that I have given and offered as advice to those who will listen. And that last quote from Six of Crows is deemed in that dangerous category of young adult books. It's a book that my daughter read when she was only in middle school, and she actually owns three copies of this book, one that she has color-coded with annotations based on the character. That book also includes a short passage about a main character plucking the eyeball from an enemy. Some might find that graphic. My daughter didn't underline that passage. The novel also includes a same-sex relationship, and perhaps some of those lines are included in my daughter's annotations, and for another student, maybe a lot more of those lines might have been. "Her older sister tried reading the novel, but it wasn't her thing." I'm like aghast, because I love that novel, but you know, she didn't like it, so she stopped reading it, and oh, how wonderful that freedom of personal choice is. "When books are being challenged right now, often with a single paragraph or passages that are cited as offensive, who then should make the decision to keep or remove that book from the hands of all children? Are you giving this power to an individual?" Are you giving this power to an individual rather than a committee of readers? A school principal who honestly is clearly encumbered with so many tasks right now that he or she cannot invest the time to read an entire novel even if they wanted to? So then what happens? They will see that single dot or two or maybe even three, but not be able to step back and view perhaps that beautiful picture, the gritty, hard-hitting novel designed to reach the kind of reader who would benefit from that cautionary tale." Thank you.
India Miller, Marco Ray. Followed by Marco Ray.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm India Miller. I graduated from Florida Public Schools. I came out as transgender in 1989, before the internet, before there were any books on being transgender, even before the term transgender existed. And I still figured out I was transgender. I want you to just think for a moment that every book you ever read growing up is about gay men. Tom Sawyer, gay. Alba Berry Finn, gay. Everybody's gay. Every Love Story, they're gay. Every Hero's gay. Every Firefighter's gay. Where do you find yourself in that? And I want to make sure that we're representing LGBTQ kids, BIPOC kids in the literature that's available at our schools, that we aren't overpolicing things from politics standpoint or religion. I worked in international education for the world's largest education company, worked closely with the Fulbright Scholarship Program. We need our kids to be ready to compete internationally. We need to be educated. We need to be educated about the world we're going into. You know, how many books would you have to read to change from being straight to gay? It just doesn't happen. You know, so allow us to have an education that represents all of us. You know, I can't imagine what that would have been like to read a book or see a movie or something on TV about a transgender person that just didn't exist. I thought I was from outer space. My church told me I was possessed by demons and the whole church did exorcisms on me. That's what we did. My family disowned me because they didn't understand what was going on. You know, perhaps I wouldn't have tried to kill myself, you know, at 10 years old, at 21. I might not have gotten into drugs and alcohol. I don't know. But I really believe if I just knew that I was okay, I was viable, that I had a path, that people would love me if I just had the strength and the courage to live my life, that I would go on to be a volunteer, that seven of my nephews and nieces would come live with me for free during college, that they'd become educators. You know, that I get to go in to people that do struggle with addiction and share my story of hope. You know, I was blessed to travel to many, many countries with my work and I saw so many different ways of life, so many different religions, so many different definitions of love and and it made my life so much richer. And I really implore all of you to allow that for your students. You know, keep the teachers able to speak to the students. Keep books available. You know, don't punish our children for the political nonsense that we're all kind of caught in. We're real people. No book made me trans. I figured out I was trans without any literature, without any internet. It still happened. I had Tonka Trucks, I had G.I. Joe, even the one with Kung-Fu Grip. And I still knew I was a girl. You know, so I just hope I can put a face to it. I'm a decent person. Being kind matters to me. Kids matter to me. The work you guys do matter to me. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Marco Ray, followed by Anna Denison.
Hello, my name is August Ray and I'm a senior at Sarasota High School. I'm here from Sarasota County because I heard your statements involving book banings. I heard your call to purge school libraries of filth. And while I agree that all books aren't always age-appropriate for all audiences, I want to share my story. The first time I read a book with a main character that was truly like me was when I was in sixth grade. I still remember the name and author of that book, Draw the Line by Lauren Lin. That was the first time I read a book featuring a queer main character. To this day, it is the only book with a queer main character that I've found without having to actively seek it out. I was able to resonate with that character in a way I didn't even have the confidence to articulate at the time. As a Sarasota County student, I just want to say I've been down this road. I've heard elected officials say the same thing before. So let me say the quiet part out loud, the part that you want to say, but you're not. When elected officials ban books on the basis of them having filth or inappropriate content, the books in question are almost always those of queer voices. I've read this story before and it did not have a good ending. Worrying about the content of books found in libraries at public schools is not productive. You are creating a moral panic. There are multitudes of important, impressing matters within the Manatee County School District, but I guarantee you accessible and free books for students are not on that list.
Thank you. Anna Denison, followed by Trevor Almy. Sorry if I pronounced that wrong.
Hi, I'm Anya. I'm a Sarasota County School graduate and Cornell student. I spent my summers in high school driving to the Anna Gale Resource Center to teach and try to get students on grade level before school started in the fall. Every summer at Anna Gale, the incredible, exceptional, and overworked team would do their absolute best with an extraordinarily limited bookshelf and every summer we wouldn't have enough books for our students. Every summer, students came back still off-grade level. Florida has the third lowest adult literacy level of all 50 states. One in five adults in Manatee County can't read above a fifth-grade level. Your students will graduate high school without the ability to read like a middle schooler. Can you please worry about that before you worry about taking books off the shelves? There aren't enough of them to start. Your students don't have enough books to read and struggle to read the few they do. Please solve problems we know are real.
Thank you, Trevor Almy. Did I pronounce that right?
Hello, Board. My name is Trevor Almy. I am a teacher at Rylett Middle Academy, a teacher in Manatee School District. I have been a teacher for 10 years. But not only as a teacher, but also as a Christian, I find that literacy is central to our growth, to our formation. And as a former seminary student, as one who is an avid follower of the Protestant Reformation, I know how much literacy and how much reading enables one to receive illumination, one to be edified, one to be educated. While I was in Mississippi, I had the opportunity to teach at an underprivileged school and I saw firsthand the the school-to-prison pipeline system for some of these students. But I also witnessed at that time how they were liberated and empowered from reading by being exposed to all kinds of books. Censorship never works. Censorship of any kind. As a English teacher, I am feeling the anxiety and the pressure of making sure my school, my, my class library conforms to a pluralistic society where the values today are becoming increasingly divided, increasingly polarized. Ironically, I can't think of anything better to make us less polarized, to make us more empathetic towards one another than through reading as it cultivates the empathy necessary for that. Again, as I said earlier, censorship never works. What you're using today to censor and to try to protect traditional Protestant right-wing values can be used against you tomorrow to censor something that you hold dear, something that you adhere to. For example, let me give you a short, brief reading here. It says, "When he reached home, he took a knife and cut up his concubine limb by limb into 12 parts and sent them into all the areas of Israel. Everyone who saw it was saying to one another, 'Such a thing has never been seen or done, not since the day the Israelites came up out of Egypt. Just imagine. We must do something, so speak up.'" Anyone know where that's from? Judges, Chapter 19, Verse 29 through 30, which hopefully is being spoken, preached in most pulpits throughout churches in, in the South. But if this were to show up, would this also fall under the lines of being too graphic, being too filthy? So, again, I urge you, I plead you as a, as a, as a teacher and as an educator and as a Christian to reconsider.
Thank you. That concludes our general public comment for this evening. We'll move to item number, oh, excuse me. Mr. Barber, do we want to come back?
Thank you, Mr. Board Chair. As we were walking out after recognitions, we happened to run into a family coming in here. I wanted to give them a chance to... So, one of our Sunshine State Scholars is Sheena Karakula from Braden River High School. So we just want to say congratulations to you. And would you like to introduce your fellow guests?
Hello, this is my mother, Madhu, and this is my brother, Chai. And I do want to apologize for being late because I'm really sorry. I am really, really, really proud that I was selected to be a Sunshine State Scholar to represent Manatee County. But I have to give most of the credits to an organization that I currently lead and that has been referenced before. I'm also proud to say that because of this organization, this is my second time being recognized in my entire school year here. So you guys seem a little familiar. I am the president of my school's Technology Student Association chapter. And in this CTSO organization, I have the chance, and with my younger brother as well, to take on STEM opportunities and finding ways to cure COPD as well as biotechnology research to little things like digital video production. And I've seen that this is an organization that Manatee County has offered to me, which I'm so, so grateful for, which is one of the reasons for why I get to be a Sunshine State Scholar. So for that, thank you so much for offering this opportunity to me.
Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Congratulations. All right, we'll move to item number 11, which is reports and presentations. We'll start with the financial audit update. So Ms. Sellers and Mr. Daniel, come on up. Yeah?
Chair, Board, and Dr. Weisong. I'm Jim Daniel, Chair of your Audit Committee. We are bringing forth Cherry Beckett's reports to you tonight for approval in Fab 19. They're both, they're called clean opinions and I'm going to shut up and let Anthony Walsh tell us more about it. He was the engagement lead and is intimately familiar with it.
Thanks.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the audit and thank you for engaging us as your auditor. My name is Anthony Walsh. I'm a senior manager with Cherry Beckett. I've been with the firm for about two years now and before that I have about seven years of audit experience. Just quickly to touch on our client service team, again, I'm the senior manager. I obviously don't do the audit alone. So Scott Anderson couldn't be here tonight, but he is the engagement director. He signs the audit report. We have a second review and technical process that goes along with that to ensure that the audit procedures we perform conform to the guidance and that the findings or information that we bring to you conform to the guidance. And then, of course, I want to recognize the staff that worked with me, Molly Circles, who was the senior and coordinated the day-to-day of the engagement, and Jack Ugaldi, who drove down here several times from Tampa to, to work through documentation on-site. So appreciate them and wanted to give them a quick shout-out. So the results of the audit, like we said, clean opinion. That means that as we carried out our procedures, we didn't find anything that, that came to a conclusion that would require us to modify our opinion. So really, it means that in essence, for the procedures that we performed, the school district is in good shape. As far as internal controls are concerned, there were no deficiencies that we believed to be material weaknesses. We also didn't define anything as a significant deficiency. So essentially, nothing in our report says that anything that happened during the course of the audit needed to be brought to your attention, needed to be disclosed to any outside parties. During the year, the district implemented GASBY 96, which is subscription-based information technology arrangements, which is essentially leases but for IT equipment. So if you think about like your ERP system, PeopleSoft, that's something that is a subscription-based information technology arrangement. And when you look in the ACFR this year, you'll notice that while it was implemented, there was no liability that was recorded and that was because it was, the, the way the contracts were structured, none were considered to be subscriptions that needed to be recorded under the guidance. We also performed a single audit over two programs. We performed one over the Child Nutrition Cluster and one over the Education Stabilization Fund. Both were carried out without any findings. And I'll open the floor to any questions.
I don't see anyone lit up to speak. No?
Well, I have to give you something to talk about. No, I, were you at the Audit Committee meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, you were. Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. So I just want to say that this was probably the best year that I've seen with, with Cherry Beckett and, and your services. You, the, the report came in on time, without any trouble. It, you had some excellent suggestions or observations, I should say, that you presented at the Audit Committee and you've presented to, to staff. And that weren't written up, but, but just, you know, and, and that's, that's very helpful and, and really beyond what you needed, had to do. And so I appreciate that. I just have one question for you, and that is, based on your experience, the, the subscriptions for, for technology, are we unusual in that our contracts are, keep us out of that hole of having to make?
Yeah, I would, I mean, I work with a, a broad range of governments, anything from airports to municipalities, school districts in the middle, you know. Most have had to record something either, if their reasoning for not has usually either been that it's been immaterial. They've set a threshold and those contracts did not rise above that threshold. This is the first time I've seen a contract in this instance where it says that it would be a short-term contract and it's for things like ERPs, et cetera. Usually those are longer-term contracts that don't have those ability to sever the contract at will by both parties with notice. Usually they're, they're longer-term and the one that has the notice is usually the company that holds the contract for the purpose of misuse, if you will. So it's a little unusual, but there's, there's nothing about it that's not on the up and up.
Oh, no, I, I want to commend our purchasing department, you know, our procurement. I think that's fabulous.
Yeah, it would have been a significant liability. I can't remember exactly how much it was, but it was, it was to the level that we had to write, you know, raise the question to management as to why it wasn't recorded. And of course, through those procedures, it was determined that that was okay. And you mentioned this being a good year for the audit and I'd be remiss not to mention Rachel and her team. It did a wonderful job of helping us obtain the audit materials that we needed to complete the audit as well as answering questions and helping us get this done on time. So I mean, yes, we worked to get it done on time, but we wouldn't have been able to do it on time without her team working hard to do the same thing.
Okay. Kudos to you guys.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anything for Mr. Daniel?
And yeah, thank you, Ms. Sellers and Mr. Daniel, all the work you guys are doing as well. Appreciate it. Brings us to the next report presentation. Blackburn Elementary School Construction Update. Mr. Rinaldi, to you first.
Good, good evening, Board members, Board Chair, Superintendent. We've got two exciting projects and both of them are meeting a milestone. Right now, we've completed design and we're getting ready to move dirt. We're getting ready to start construction. Both have been working very diligently, the Blackburn project, with the principle to make sure that we've got adequate instructional space and we've got an instructional environment that's appropriate for the children as well. The Blackburn project is the fourth of five COPS projects. So at this point right now, once we get Blackburn under contract, we have four of the five contracts and then Palmasola is the last COPS contract that we're doing. The North County Middle School project is a reuse of Mona Jane and the SUG project. So we, we kind of know what our expectations are there. There have been some changes that we have made to this design as well in order to accommodate the actual site location. But I'm going to turn it first over to Jeff and his team so that they can give you an overview of Blackburn first.
Thank you, Mr. Rinaldi. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board members, Dr. Weisong. I'm Jeff Medwitz, Project Director for the Blackburn Elementary Addition and Remodel Project. And tonight I'm joined by our architects, Construction Man- And tonight, I'm joined by our architects, Construction Manager, and Principal Adrian Voss. And we are very pleased to present to you tonight the guaranteed maximum price for the project. We began this project in early 2022. It's been a long road, and as you are very well aware, the inflation in our economy is very challenging to not only our projects but districts across the state. But I want to publicly say that I'm very proud of this team, this talented team, who have overcome these challenges. And this project will give a much-needed civic presence to the school and provide our students with fantastic facilities. So, I'd first like to introduce you to the architect, Todd Willsey, of Wannamaker Jensen Architects, and he'll provide a high-level overview for you.
Good evening, Todd Willsey, Wannamaker Jensen Architects. I'm also here with Mary Alvarez, who served as the project manager for us. We're very excited to be presenting this to you, and we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to work on this project. The scope of the project included many things. The Castaldi Report recommended the demolition of Buildings 1 and 6. One is the main building in the center of the campus. Replacing that Building 1 with a new building. Complete renovation of the remaining existing facilities. Improve the Jacobs FCI from 47% to less than 5%. That'll reduce deferred maintenance. Renovating all the roof systems, replacing mechanical systems, plumbing systems, replacing exterior doors and windows, improving the technology infrastructure, improving campus safety and the life safety systems, stormwater improvements, and a big one is improving traffic queuing. So, if you look at the two plans, the one on the left is the existing. The Building 1 that will be coming out eventually is the main building, the white one in the center of the campus. We're leaving that until the end because we need some of the service functions within it, fire alarm systems and things like that. And it also will serve as a covered entry and protected entry for the students to get into the campus during construction. Just to orient you on the site, 17th is down at the bottom of the drawing. It's north is up, and the parent drop is on the west side, the left side. They circulate through the parking and come up on the left side of Building 1. They will continue to do that, but we will shorten it slightly during construction. The bus drop is on the right-hand side. All the main buildings that will be renovated are towards the top of the drawing, and then the playfields to the north. There are existing portables on the east side of the campus. Those will remain during construction, but once it's done, they will be removed. The proposed plan on the right kind of maintained the same two entrances that were at the school. We don't want to get into right-of-way permitting issues, but we did swap some of the functions. Now, the buses are on the left-hand entrance and the service drive connecting to the new cafeteria. And the parent queue is on the right-hand side that then enters in, goes all the way to the north, returns back from that cul-de-sac, and then moves along the front of the campus, and then over towards the bus drop where they share a covered entry that then gets them into the campus. The red area is the new building. We tried to stretch it across the front of the campus as much as possible to provide a new face for the school. Many challenges are part of this, working around the existing facilities, maintaining security for the kids during construction. Just to name a few. This drawing is the plan of the new building. It's kind of rotated, so north is to the left. But the administrative area is the lavender at the top of the drawing. The secured entrance, any visitor will have to be buzzed into the reception area and then buzzed out to enter the campus. They also have to be buzzed to get into the remainder of the building. The yellow area is dining, multipurpose, the stage, and then the kitchen area, serving the entire school, but that is also planned for future growth. We know there's some developments coming to the area, so we sized it for the projected size of the school, as well as the media center. Behind that is some more lavender, which are kind of some more administrative spaces that serve the students. We've got the school psychologists, social workers, and things like that that the students can access more easily than going to the true administration. Next to that is... Below that is the music studio that also serves as a green room to the stage. And then, to the left, is the kind of open collaborative media center with a lot of different spaces for different-sized groups, some intimate reading spaces, some one-on-one spaces, some group activity spaces. And then, wrapping that would be the purple is pre-K classrooms, and the aqua would be kindergarten classrooms. And the nice thing is, we're going to build this area first so that the school can use those classrooms as flex spaces instead of adding more portables during construction and renovation of the other spaces. So, as you can see on this drawing, the red is the new building. It frames the new courtyard between the existing buildings. All the yellow is going to be renovated. We're upgrading the courtyards between them. We've planned for potential future portables. We never really want them, but we've left space for them next to the red, there to the west. And then, all the way to the east would be where the future building could go, between the last yellow building and the parent drive. And the parent drive could be extended if needed. Oops. And then, just a quick view of the school as you approach from that combined parent and bus drop. Entering the secured entrance of the campus, you can see the administrative area on the left. They can visually monitor the whole front of the school, see any threats approaching, see any issues with students loading and unloading. Below that is kind of the exterior courtyard, that same area before you come into the school, which also serves as staging for kids getting on the buses and in their parents' cars. And then, the security gate that they would all enter, and that would be closed off at once all the students are in. And then, in the courtyard, the new courtyard created between the new building and existing buildings, the top image is kind of an intimate teaching and reading courtyard outside of the media center. And then, the lower image is the courtyard space outside of the cafeteria that could also serve for exterior dining and an exterior classroom with the administration in the distance. And I'd like to introduce John and Matt from AD Morgan to go through the budget and schedule.
Thanks. Good evening, Board. My name is Matt DiMaggio, the Vice President of Preconstruction Services for AD Morgan. I'll be the Construction Manager, and we're very grateful for this opportunity to serve the Board, District, and the members of the Blackburn community. So, first, beginning with the guaranteed maximum price and how we arrived at where we are today, I first want to, you know, give a tremendous amount of credit to the Facilities Department for Manatee County School District, and Todd, and the entire team from Wannamaker Jensen, and the group of preconstruction and construction professionals from AD Morgan that really allowed us to get here. Now, there... You know, we could go on and on all evening about the efficiencies that we look for to really optimize the budget for the project. As you know, we've been, you know, going through a pretty volatile economic cycle, dealing with really a moving target all along the way. So, this is a culmination of all the efforts that it took to get here. First, beginning with our preconstruction agreement, really for the $697,000 that allowed us to not only perform preconstruction services, but also do early enabling work on the campus to move everybody out of Building 1 and into the temporary administration building and Building Number 2. And then, our second preconstruction amendment, number one, was the early release package for our HVAC and electrical gears. We know those are long lead elements that if we don't order those early, we're not going to have them in time to maintain our schedule. And then, finally, our guaranteed maximum price was the culmination of the remainder of the architectural design, the site work, everything that will go into making this a complete, a complete new campus. So, we're at $36.4 million, and that's the number it'll be at the end of the day. So, with that, I'd like to introduce John Calliff to talk about schedule and phasing for the project and how we're going to keep you guys up and running as we work our way through the campus. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. As you look at the schedule, the green line is depicting New Building 1. That's really the building Todd was focusing on earlier. Very exciting new building. The site work that goes along with that is a blue line underneath. And then, where the renovations, as we go through each one of the existing buildings, will be done as efficiently as possible using the portables that we have without adding new portables is the plan. And we're going to work very close... Continue to work very closely with Principal Voss to ensure the safety of the students and the faculty, and also to make sure that, you know, our disruptive process is kept at an all-time minimum. That's the goal. That's what we want to do. And our folks onsite will be George Rivera, Madison Beck, and Aaron Simpson. They are extremely talented folks, and they're going to be dedicated to working with the principal and her staff to make sure that that happens. So, we appreciate this opportunity to be here this afternoon. And now, I'd like to introduce Principal Voss for a few words.
Good evening, Chair Choate, members of the Board, and Dr. Weisong. The faculty, staff, students, parents, they have waited patiently for this construction project. We have waited for the physical appearance and the function of the facilities to match the high-quality nature of the people that are housed within. And we are so thankful that we are here today to get this plan in front of you, and we hope that it is approved and so that in the next two years, we can look well and happily at a new site for our students to learn in. I want to thank all members of the team that got us to this point as we look forward to these next few months ahead where we can see shovels in the ground and a new school in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'd be glad to entertain any questions you may have.
Yep. We have... Mr. Tatum is lit to comment.
Hello. That was a good presentation, short and sweet and to the point, and very informative. So, that's the way I like him, at least, so... So, I'd like to talk to somebody about traffic. Who would be the best person to maybe discuss traffic? I'm just curious, do we do any coordination, or do you do any coordination with the county about trying to look at what might be possible? Because as I drive around to schools and I see, you know, 300 cars lined up down the road, I think, well, maybe there's some better coordination we could do with the county. Both the school system and the county could work better together as government agencies, but I'm just wondering if you guys at all consult with the county to see what improvements might be possible?
In our quarterly meetings with the local jurisdictions, we did talk about 17th with the county. They have some future plans for improving that. That's as much coordination we've done so far. We hope that we can encourage them to do some turning lanes. That would be really helpful. However, Todd can probably explain the amount of queuing that we've... We'll be adding to this, which will help.
Yeah, we... The current school has about 1,000 linear feet of onsite queuing. They do back up into the street. The layout we showed you adds an additional 600 linear feet, so that's at least 30 cars or so off the road. And it is planned to be extended to the north more if we need to, but, you know, as a compromise, we stopped it where we did at a swell.
Okay. So, there is a possibility of putting a turning lane in there, though, somehow, somewhat? The county, I mean, at least.
Yeah.
That's the county's idea. I just...
We're controlling what we're doing onsite to get them out of the right-of-way, and then they can work with the county for the rest of it.
Yeah. When you say "they" can work with the county, who would? That would be you? Yeah. Have you ever thought of... I don't know if it's even possible, but talking to the county in advance as you come to us with proposals and say, you know... Because they'll allow contractors, at least my understanding in talking to county commissioners, is that if a builder would like to put in some infrastructure, and a lot of times, the builder can do it cheaper, so I'm told, because they have less restrictions. I don't know what the rules are necessarily, but that's what I'm told, is that maybe as part of the construction project, you could say, hey, we'll put that turn lane in there for you. Here's the price of it, but it's just a thought. I mean, is that a good thought? It sounds like a good idea in my mind, but it's... In reality, it doesn't work because of your... You know, you know what you're doing, and it's just not feasible? Or what are your thoughts on that?
Mr. Rinaldi might be able to address the interaction with the county, but from a standpoint of at least coordinating with them, we do on a regular basis, quarterly, meet with them and discuss. And I know that Mike Pendley, our planner, senior planner, is in practically constant communication with them.
Yeah, in addition, part of the inter-local agreement that we do have with the county is whenever we increase capacity on a campus, we talk with them, and we actually go through a permitting process with them. With this particular project, we were not increasing the number of student stations. So, we relied on the quarterly meetings that we have with them. Typically, at those quarterly meetings, we present our active projects to them, and they let us know, you know, what their long-term, 10-year plan is for that area as well. But this team was extremely budget-driven. So, even a turn lane, those type of thing, any signalization and all that stuff, we typically... Our funding does not allow us to do that extent of work in the right-of-way. That typically is a county assignment.
When you say "our" funding, it means like school... School system funds, there would be some legal barrier to us constructing a turn lane?
Yeah, typically, we have very limited funding. We do have some funding that comes through the gas tax that we can use for off-site improvements, but it's miniscule compared to a $40 million project that we've got, $30 million projects we've got going.
But I would like to know, is there a legal... Is there a legal barrier? Or it's... You're just saying we would...
It's a financial barrier.
Financial, meaning we don't have the funds to do it?
We don't have eligible funds that we can use for that.
Eligible means it would be...
It would be...
Not legally possible to pull out of some pot of money?
Right.
To...
Yeah, we wouldn't... I mean, for us to go off-site and to do improvements, it would have to be driven by a traffic study. And at this point right now, we did not do a traffic study on this project because we weren't increasing capacity.
Okay, but you can see the lines of cars that are down the road.
Exactly.
So, why would we not... Because if the problem... Just because... So, I have a problem. But just because I'm... My plan is not to make the problem worse, I still have a problem. So, why would I not try and do something to... Because the citizens of the county, when they are driving to these schools, especially after a whole new construction, we spent $36 million to do reconstruction in a school site, and still, the parents drive up and they go, well, I'm still sitting in the same line that I've been sitting in. You know, I know we extended the lane a little bit, right?
Well, we didn't extend it a little bit.
A little bit.
We added, what, 40, 50%? I mean, so, I mean, that... Those are the things that we can do to address what's happening in the right-of-way in the street is by having additional queuing and cleaning up the circulation onsite. For us to go off-site and to do roadway improvements, which are really, quite honestly, the responsibility of the county.
Right.
And they should have it in their master plans.
Okay. So, still, the citizens expect us, between the county and the school system, to give them the best possible service that we can. So, what I think I hear, the answer kind of is, well, it's not our problem. The county needs to fix that road. But in the meantime, we're still going to have this big line of cars going down the road, even though we're going to spend $36 million.
That wasn't what was said. I mean, we resolved the issue the way we can, which is to bring more onsite queuing in order to alleviate going out on the 17th right now. So, that's within our capabilities, and with it, more importantly, within our budget as well.
I know we're having a little bit of a tough discussion, Mr. Rinaldi, but that's...
I'm...
I don't mean to be... I'm not trying to harass you. I'm just trying to get to the bottom of this because the citizens expect... I know if I were just a citizen not being involved in this, and I saw a whole new school built, and still, the line is the same as it was at the old school, I'd say, who did this? Like, why is this line of cars still here? Can't we... Can't the county in the... Why is there not a turning lane to get into the school? And so, what I'll ask at this point is, and maybe I'll turn right to our legal counsel and just... Would you please provide... Because my question is, are we legally able to use capital funds? I guess it would be from the school system to do things like a turning lane or something like that to alleviate the problem? I don't need an answer right now, maybe unless you feel like you could give one. But I would just like to... Because what I think I heard you say is, you're saying we don't have a bucket of money to pull from to do that?
We've got a very small bucket of money that we can use for off-site improvements.
Okay. So, maybe we need to put more money in that bucket or transfer something around in the capital fund? I don't know. I just... My bottom line is, the citizens of the county deserved to have... my bottom line is, the citizens of the county deserved to have better service than to have, after we spent $36 million, they're still sitting in the same. Now, I know we extended it inside. That's helpful too. But this gentleman still said there would be, when I asked, I asked, have you coordinated with the county? And sir, you said, well, yeah, there's an opportunity to put a turn lane there. Well, that would be helpful. So, why wouldn't we do that? And the answer is, well, it's hard to tell. Either we're legally not able to do it or, well, that's the county's job and they got to do it. Well, let's get it done then. The citizens are looking at us going, I don't care whose money it is. I don't want to sit anymore outside the school waiting for my kid than I have to. And certainly, the other people who are going down the road and are trying to get somewhere, like that'll happen at Southeast, right? You go to Southeast High School at exit time and you're trying to get somewhere. And you're like, what's going on? Well, school's out. Well, I got to get to work or I got to get to my medical appointment. And, you know, you're just like, well, sorry, there's no turn lane there. So, you're just going to have to sit in traffic. Or you have to remember that it's 2:30 in the afternoon. And so, you got to go around a bunch of lanes. I just think we can do better. Sorry. Again, I'm not being difficult. I just think we can do better as governments working together. And if we're going to spend $36 million, if it costs us another million dollars to put in a turn lane for a quarter of a mile or something like that, I think we should try and find a way to do it. So, I would just ask the legal counsel to provide some type of, what would you call it? Not judgment, but legal opinion on if that's possible to do with capital funds from the school system.
We've got to answer back to you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Rinaldi, for taking your time to talk to me this evening.
I guess out of my, out of my grasp, just kind of on that subject, is obviously, we don't know if putting a turn lane is going to really help or not. I mean, obviously, you don't know, this extra 600 may solve things, who knows? But my question is, to Mr. Tatum's point is, as the site is looked at from the very beginning, is that something even comes up, right? So, like, that's my question is like, if, if, if that could be done, whether it be by us or the county, during the process, I would love for it to be brought up. Like, hey, we know there's an issue. Listen, let's be honest though. There's issues at every school. I don't care what we do. There's issue at every school and every place we drive. But if we could make it potentially a little bit better. So, my question is, I guess just in the, in the beginning phases, when we do something like this, can you, can you bring that up? And maybe we do. The county says, yeah, you do it or deal with it.
And we do it during, during our meetings, quarterly meetings. We present the projects, the active projects that we've got going on. And we coordinate, you know, active projects that the county has going on. I mean, a prime example of that is Parish Community High School during the traffic circle in the back there. That, that we work closely with them to get that done. Now, true, it was what, four years after the building was constructed? But they've got tight capital budgets as well, you know, when it comes to their prioritization.
Do you want to add to it?
Yes, Mr. Joe. Mr. Pendley, Mike, our planner. Mike has the calculation that he goes through to ensure that we get all of the traffic off of the street. And that's why we spend so much time determining how much queuing we need to bring on campus because we don't want to leave a bunch of traffic on the streets. So, that's a calculation that's dealt with right before every project starts. I did that with Johnson. I did that with Mona Jane. I did that with Suck. Every project I've ever been on, we've determined how much queuing we're going to need to get the students that are registered for that campus to get onsite. So, it's something we take a lot of time to deal with. And it's been working very good thus far. Mona Jane hasn't been a problem. Suck, not a problem. Johnson Middle School was a tremendous problem. Traffic was backed up 26th and 27th. The new queuing that we put in alleviated that. And we work with the county to make sure those types of incidents are abated as well.
So, are you saying that there was a study done and it was determined that a turn lane's not needed? Is that, is that what you're?
The turn lane, the study was done to get the traffic off of the street, onto the campus as we're bringing kids in and kids are leaving out so that we can keep the streets, the traffic moving and get the kids and the parents on the campus and off-campus in an expeditions manner.
Right. So, it's, well, if you did, if you did that study, what you're saying is, based on what's currently there, there's not a need for extra, an extra turn lane or something like that? Is that?
That's in my experience with the projects I've done, Mr. Tatum. That's what has worked out for us. Now, in a new school, well, let's say for instance, Buffalo Creek. Buffalo Creek was a situation where we weren't adding to student stations. But the county asked us to help them with a turn lane. We had some money in there to assist them with it. And we worked with the county to make sure that that happened. But that was a collaborative between the school district and the county to make that happen. And we had, but dollars set aside to do that, that did not take a lot of money from the whole purposes of putting the school and the new building in place so that we can put the money to the education of our students. And that worked out well with us. But that was a collaborative between the county and us over at Buffalo Creek.
And doing it in this situation would, is not necessary? That collaborative effort, you're saying is not necessary or?
We do, as Joe stated and as Jeff stated, those meetings that we get on a quarterly basis, we discuss the projects. We discuss what we're planning on doing. And we talk about how we can make sure that we get the traffic off the streets. And if we need a turn lane, we discuss what we can do within the economic budgets that we both have. A lot of times, the county's already making provisions for that because they're looking ahead like we are as it relates to trying to alleviate the traffic issues and get the kids in the school for education.
Okay. So, I'm going to, I'm going to drive by. I think, I think the project showed that it ends in like October of '25 or something like that. So, maybe on one November, I'm going to go drive down there at whatever time that school gets out. Elementary school's got what, 320 or something? See if there's a big line of cars. And I hope there's not. So, we'll see. All right. Thank you all for your time. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Bray?
Yeah. I'm excited for this project. First of all, I've been by there a few times, not toured totally. But I've stopped in there before and just time-wise, it wasn't working out. You said during the presentation that because there's no future growth, that we don't have to do any modifications for traffic flow because we're not adding, is that what you said, Mr. Rinaldi? Because we're not adding any student stations.
Right.
So, we don't have to go to the county and say, we need to add a turn lane. I understand the 40, 40% of the traffic coming off of the road onto our grounds and then out. That's going to alleviate a lot. And then the comment about Johnson, I go by there all the time. Anytime I come up here, there's always a traffic problem, no matter what. To me, that school should have had a turn lane for that, going and coming. But you said that there wasn't going to be any adding to the student station? And I think this is for you.
But we do have the potential, because we've got two areas where we can do an addition.
Okay. That was going to be my question. We have so far 551 students there, a quarter, less than, okay. So, future growth, how much, how many student stations could we add in future? I'm just, because you're right, that area is starting to.
We plan the cafeteria and media center for a projected growth of up to 750 students.
Okay. So, around to some, okay.
And locate an area where we could extend that queuing lane as well.
Okay. So, we would extend the queuing lane there.
And locate at the future building that would.
I mean, that, the, the road to get into the front entrance, I'm not good on this map. That's such a bad road anyway. It's a narrow, narrow road down through there. And let's talk about the county. They need to fix a lot of the potholes and everything else on that road. Is there a potential space to put a turn lane there? I, I just want to know because maybe we don't have the financial support with the district to put a turn lane or whatever. But maybe we can leverage the county to say, hey, we're doing this product. Did we do that? Because we didn't add student stations, it sounds to me like we didn't have that conversation because we didn't add student station, there wasn't really a need to have that topic come up.
No, because we didn't add the stations, we didn't have the traffic study to evaluate whether we would need the turn lane. I mean, we, with the existing number of students enrollment there, we felt that adding the additional 600 lineal feet of queuing would be adequate.
Okay. Okay. All right. I just, I'm, like I said, I'm excited for the project. I just hope we don't come back in five years and say, we're adding 200 student stations and we need to add more loop.
Well.
And we have the space.
And then you would, we would, if we were at 200, then we would do the traffic study and work with the county on the possibility of a turn lane or a left-in lane or something along that line. And, you know, the widening of 17th was on their capital budget. It would support us.
Okay. Because that, that was my, because that was my first question. Future growth, how much? Because that area is developing quite a lot. I just don't like that little road that you have to go down to get to that school. But that's all I had. Again, Johnson, when Wakeland and Johnson merged, it, it did create a bottleneck there. I know we increased the bus loop or the drop-off loop. But if I had my, I wish, I wish we had a turn lane there for dropping off because it's, it is a nightmare. And I, and this, the level of people who don't respect this speed limit. And the biggest, I won't say all the biggest, but a lot of the offenders are the parents dropping off their kids. And I'm just saying, it's sad to see that.
You're going to get email.
I'm going to get an email, I'm sure. But it could be that one that needs to get to a doctor's appointment too. But all kids need to be weary of that. So, I'm excited for this project. I'm excited for all the students there. I think this is going, this is going to be just so great for that whole area too. Make it welcoming again. Yeah. Thank you. That's all I had.
Ms. Fleming?
Yeah. First, I wanted to ask Principal, how much growth have you seen? Let's say in the last three years, if you had to estimate how many additional students you've had each year?
Well, each year has been different. This past year was actually a decline as we saw more and more charter schools opening up. So, that number that Ms. Bray had of 550 was last year's enrollment. This year's enrollment is hovering around 478, still growing from where we started in August, but not quite where we left off last school year. So, while we do know that that area is growing, they do plan to build more housing in that area. I think that's where the growth is coming from. But right now, because of those additional charter schools, we have seen a decline in enrollment.
Okay. So, we're building to accommodate 551 or do we, what is the, what is the number of student stations that we're? 600. Okay. Okay. Was there, because growth isn't going to happen, it's not going to happen overnight five years from now where we go, whoops, we need those extra 150 stations. Did we evaluate the possibility of going ahead as long as we're doing the building of adding those additional student stations? Mr. Rinaldi?
No. At this point right now, we, we looked for the increase of the 150 additional student stations and having an area where we would be able to put portables in. But we did not look at expanding this campus.
Okay. If you had to guess, I mean, obviously, it's a guess, a projection, how many years it would take to get up to 750?
I, I, I cannot guess.
All right. No magic ball tonight. Okay, fine. All right. As far as the budget goes, what is the cost per square foot for the, for the new construction? And what is it for the renovation?
I believe we were around 400 for the?
400 for new construction. We were about 275 for renovation. But I think everything netted out about 400.
Okay. Could you address the amount of increase in the price since the original? You know, we've start, it's progressed. I mean, I know that things have gone up, but it's quite, it's quite a bit more than what we had originally anticipated. Can you address specifically what went up?
We look at, every month, we look at the prior month's cost index study for all construction materials and compare it to the, to the current month. And then look at it from two years ago, from 2020 when everything blew up. We're 40%, we're 40% higher across the board than we were two years ago for all construction materials kind of aggregated. There are some things that are getting better. Gypsum's coming down. Steel's getting easier to get. But that stuff changes from one day to the next. Our electrical switch gear, we talked about earlier. We got 52 to 54 weeks, which is why you have to order that stuff early. That wasn't the case a year ago. That's a new, relatively new thing. Air conditioning equipment's gotten a little easier to get, but it's getting more expensive. So, I wish I had a magic ball and I could look into the future and tell you that everything's going to come back down to where it was in 2019. But that ain't going to happen. So, we're looking at across the board about a 40% increase in construction materials from where we were two years ago, which is about when we started this exercise. Yeah. Oh, and then the labor component of it as well. It's just a, it's, it's an ongoing issue to get younger people into the industry because we've got, we're down, I think, 456,000 people in the state of Florida that we need right now to service the amount of construction projects that are currently being built in Florida. So, there's people coming in to fill that void, but there's no young people coming up. So, we're trying to encourage that. As for all the schools that we get the opportunity to build on, we're trying to encourage the, not only in design and construction, but in the trades as well. There's tremendous opportunity in the trades across the board. But that's, that's another wild card because people are having to pay whatever they have to pay to keep the guys they got, you know. And if you asked me, you know, a year ago, what a pipe fitter was going to make then compared to what they're making now, it's unbelievable. It's just crazy. But I'd rather have them making what they're making than not have them at all. And that's the, that's what we're faced with.
Mr. Tatum anticipates being there on November 1st of 2025?
We'll have a hard hat. No, you don't need a hard hat then. We'll be done.
I'm looking at the, this was the construction update back in February. And the estimated construction start was supposed to be July 2023.
Right.
How are we doing? That was six months ago. I mean, did construction start? Okay. So, he's, he's going to be, he's going to be too early on November 1st? Or do you anticipate being?
No, it's a 21-month schedule from, we're going to mobilize February 12th. Is that right?
February 12th.
February 12th. We're mobilizing and we're getting going. So.
Okay. So, you're?
Yeah, we're, we're ready to go. Our guys have been raring to go for quite some time now.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have one more question.
Ms. Messenger?
Oh, go ahead.
She can go. It's fine. It'll all after.
It's all right. I was just looking at the summary sheet. And on the handout that we have, it shows a GMP of 34 million. I can't remember the number exactly.
34, 390.
Yeah, okay. But the summary sheet has quite a bit more than that on there. So, I'm looking at the 2026, 28, 22, the original project budget. Of course, we know why it's, why things went so high. And then revised, a revision on 627, 2023. And then our pending today, which is at the 40 million. So, go ahead, Mr. Rinaldi, if you can explain.
Well, I mean, the overall construction budget includes the professional fees for the architects, includes the technology, the FFNE, all the testing that we need to do. So, that, that's the 40 million number, includes those items.
I just wanted to point that out because I don't, I'm sure I'm going to get that question somewhere. Oh, well, it's 40 million, not 36. So, okay. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Yep. Ms. Messenger?
Yeah, the 36 is just the construction.
Right.
I had a whole bunch of things to say about traffic and how we don't hire traffic experts, the county does because I won't go into that. I'm going to move past that. I just want to talk about how excited I am. about how excited I am because you're right. The program at that school is spectacular. And the facilities need to match how spectacular that program is. And so I so appreciate you coming here tonight and saying everything that you said because everyone needs to hear it. Just how wonderful that school is, how wonderful the program is. And I can only hope that when the facilities match the quality that exists inside those buildings already, when the facilities match, that we'll be able to pull some of them back because they're gonna go, oh, you know, now I see this does match. Now this does make sense because it is a fabulous program. It's a fabulous school. And so I just, I just wanted to appreciate you being here. I really appreciate it. I know it's not an easy job. I can only imagine what it's gonna be like for you for the next however many months.
Twenty-one months.
You're gonna be count down the days. I got it. I can only imagine. But I'm so grateful. I'm so grateful you're here and really explaining how special the program is there. That's really my biggest thing. I am just so excited. This school was in District One, and then we moved MAPS. And so I am Title One's my heart. And I just, I am a firm believer that the Title One facilities should be on par. And I'm just so excited to see it finally here in front of me today. Okay, I cannot tell you, like, you mentioned, you know, you've been working on this for a couple of years. Me too. Trying to get it on the capital budget, trying to get it go, like, I'm with you. I, I, believe me. I'm so excited. I just can't even tell you how excited I am today. That's just, I mean, I'm excited. So thank you. That's it. I appreciate all of you, especially you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think Ms. Messenger is excited.
I'm excited. I can use a lot of other words to describe it. Elated.
It is a long time coming.
It is. So long.
So thank you very much. We don't have any other board members for comment. So thank you for the presentation. And I'm gonna do a quick recess because we passed our hour and a half for ten minutes. So six fifty-five, we'll read your.
Thank you.
All right, welcome back. We're gonna start a minute early. So we've still in reports and presentations. We did the Blackburn. Now we're down to North County Middle School construction.
Thank you. I'd like to have Reggie come up and introduce the team for North County Middle School.
I'm back. Mr. Chair, Board, Superintendent Dr. Weisong, District Staff. My name is Reggie Goff. I'd like to talk to you about our North County Middle School and present to you our GMP. This is an exciting time for us. Got an opportunity to build another dynamic educational facility. We've built this twice, and each one has its own individual architectural flavor. But I'd like to introduce to you the gentleman who's made this possible, Steve Johnson with Harvard.
Jolly.
And I've got Robbie Gronbeck with Willa Smith Construction. And they're gonna talk to us about the architectural aspects of this particular project. And we're gonna have Robbie talk to us about the estimating side of it. So without further ado, I'll bring these gentlemen before you. And again, we thank you for the opportunity to present and look forward to building this school once again.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Again, Steve Johnson. I'm a partner with Harvard Jolly PBK Architecture, members of the Board, Chairman Kote, Dr. Weisong. We, first and foremost, appreciate your trust in our team on this important school. And I want to recognize Emma Van Aken, who's our project architect on the project, as well as countless engineers and architects that have been involved with this dynamic project. So as Mr. Goff mentioned, this is a reuse of Dr. Mona Jane and Sub Middle School, but it's different. It's a little bit different. There's a few things that I'll highlight over the slide presentation. Hopefully, that's not me. As we go through, safety and security is the first and foremost. So we position the school on the site for maximum visibility, big picture, right? And then you have a central, one single point of entry, similar to all of your other schools. We wanted to reinforce that, that that's a safe and secure camera, operation, all that. And I just wanna make sure that you can see the screen. You can see the slides?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. So the third bullet point is a point of emphasis. We collaborated not only with the county, but the local developer. And the result of you adding student stations, North River Ranch required a traffic study. There is a turn lane provided. I'm kinda queuing into the conversation on the last presentation. But it, you know, fortunately, we, it's a greenfield site, so we have more opportunity for, you know, planning for that. And what, what that does is allow, allowed us onsite then to provide just over a mile of queuing onsite. So it sounds impressive, but it's gonna fill up quickly. And we allowed for future growth as well. So on the site plan, there's a position for a future classroom building. Essentially, on day one, you have capacity for fourteen hundred sixty-three. That's one thousand four hundred and sixty-three students. But we've planned the core spaces and your, and your onsite queuing and parking for an additional two hundred and sixty-three or four. It's about twelve classroom, classroom addition when you need that in the future. But in the meantime, you would have the space available onsite for, you know, temporary classrooms. And we provide some basic utilities out to that location as well. So you're prepped for now, intermediate and long-term growth as well. One of the points that I know over the years, recent years, that you as a board have discussed is the energy usage index and the, and the efficiency of your buildings. And we're proud to say that this, this particular school, the envelope design, is designed to be, you know, at least fifteen percent better than the average for this building type of this capacity. So a lot of engineering and design thought has gone into that to maximize that for you. Best use of the dollars for bricks and mortar construction and energy use, usage long-term test. And I will highlight that we went back, this is very close to the envelope, although we've, we've tweaked it just a little bit, enhanced it. But if you go back to Dr. Mona Jane Middle School, we went back and did a blower door test. We did, which, which involves, you know, pressurizing the building and understanding the energy usage that you had had for that year prior and calculated all the numbers. And that's kinda where we came up with that fifteen percent. But since then, we've gone over and above on the envelope design. So that's why I say we exceed, we're exceeding fifteen percent. But we would only really know that true number if we went a year or two after and did another test like that. But we're confident that you're, you have a very efficient building here. The parent drop-off pickup lane is important. And, you know, part of that traffic study, a part of the state requirements for education and the building codes, which, which we follow, and you expect us to follow, separates out cars from buses. So we have ample separation of that and allow students, as you can see in this front picture, to really ride their bicycle and walk up right up to the front of the building. I'll show that to you in the next slide. We have all the play fields, the basketball courts, and the covered play area. And part of what Mr. Goff mentioned about, and, and Mr. Rinaldi mentioned about adjusting this campus, show you in this next slide, is on the back of this building, we've canted, we've rotated the gymnasium building. Because of the configuration of the site, we've allowed for maximum visibility and access to the play fields. And it also allows for opposite of that gymnasium, a future classroom building. So when that's built, it'll all be one cohesive campus. But essentially, the design is a, all the core spaces on the right-hand side of this image include, you know, your administration space, music, dining, and the gymnasium with the opportunity for outdoor dining, you know, or outdoor educational space in between that dining and gymnasium building. So that's up to the administrator, up to the school-based administrator, how they wanna use that space. But it also provides access out to the play field, the hard courts and play field areas. On the left side of that main all-included, secured entry mall, which if you've been through Sub or Mona Jane, you've seen that communicating space, on the left of that is two, two-story classroom buildings. So it's all the classroom buildings, the labs, the media space. We positioned the media space again out front. So for after-hours use, we essentially wanna give the ability for most of the core spaces to be accessed after hours depending on access control, you know, managed by onsite administrators. So that's the overall view there. On the bottom of this image, you can see the bus loop has wide generous turning radiuses. On the upper left, the left side of the image is the parking area. And that car queuing that serpentines through, we've learned some lessons about having those two tight. And then, you know, people tend to kinda wanna hop from one lane to the other. So we've separated those out quite a bit. We have used that for stormwater management in those areas as well. So I think we've planned, done a pretty good job of planning for you on that based on lessons learned. Here's a front entrance picture from overhead. You can see that center area right in the middle where we really wanna provide that, you know, kinda multimodal transportation. I think about the students on their bikes or walking or, you know, being dropped off to be able to, you know, have a, have a connective path from the walking along their neighborhood, community sidewalks up into the school. And then we place the buses on the right and the cars on the left. Here's an inside, some of the key areas are on the inside is we've updated some of the finishes and lightings and lighting, you know, photometrics and things like that based on energy, you know, code requirements and things like that, updates. So in the multipurpose space, you can see in here, we have lots of visibility out into that communicating space. But not too much, right? You have enough to have access, but you don't have too much of that sort of a balance there. We did carry forward a lot of the great food service, you know, back of house, kitchen, you know, equipment positioning and updated and worked extensively with, with staff to make sure that we're. you know, equipment positioning and updated and worked extensively with staff to make sure that we're advancing that, but staying with a lot of things that work well for them right now. But just entrance into the serveries and the access and the closing those down for after-hours functions. We fine-tuned those just a little bit as well. So we kept a lot of the great bones of this space, but we tweaked and updated and improved. Perhaps hopefully over time we'll know. We'd like to go a year or two afterwards and just kind of see it in action and see what happens. But we feel we've made some good strides there in that space. Gymnasium capacity, it's a little, about 500, over 500 roughly. I will say just back up for just a minute, in the food service, that's, we planned for three different lunch periods. So that's kind of been a thing that we've talked through, and it's just not a kind of a random, but it's part of their schedule. And in the gymnasium, the 500 capacity is really on the bleacher side. It's not, you have a lot more capacity if you wanted to bring out, you know, additional seating and things like that. I will say as a part of this, Robbie will mention it when he's talking about the budget. We went through some, as you might expect, and you expect us to do this all the way through every stage. It's called value engineering. You've probably heard of that term. Well, we're trying to maximize, you know, the value of every dollar we're putting in. That, you know, every, you know, all the bricks and mortar, the things that the students and the staff touch every day are important, but also the main, to maintain, you know, for maintenance, future maintenance, the costs that you're gonna see over the life of the building. So we worked really hard to, you know, start with the vision, but then we pulled back. And one example of that is in this image, and I apologize if we didn't update the image. A little bit more of a last-minute thing. We took some of these windows, we took the windows out of the gym. It's not a big deal. You know, I have windows in every gym anyway. But, you know, we were kind of hoping that they would go through the bid process a little bit easier. They didn't. So we pulled them out. But that keeps dollars in the project where they need to be. So that's part of the process. We did that through schematic design, design development, all the way through construction documents, just up to the last few weeks. And really have worked hard as a team and collaborated with your staff and all of the stakeholders to make sure that we're maximizing the value. Media centers, you know, huge part of the school, obviously. And, you know, there's a refresh on the furniture and fixtures in that space, technology. I want to make sure that we, if we're not providing it today, we're providing the infrastructure where necessary. So we're spending those dollars on conduit, things like that, in specific places where it can be useful to add technology for additional professional development, things like that, that is used in a space like this. I think that's it for the images. Turn it over to Robbie.
Good evening, Board members, Chairman Cho, Superintendent Weisong. My name is Robbie Gronbeck. I'm Vice President of Preconstruction Services at Willis Smith Construction. And on behalf of our preconstruction and operations team, I want to thank you for the opportunity to build your educational facilities. And some of you may know this, but this will be our third time building this particular prototype. And just want to say thank you for that opportunity. So on the screen, you can see a proposed schedule, just highlights. We presented the guaranteed maximum price to the school district on January 12th. If we're approved for this project, we would anticipate starting construction in February, so next month. We would put shovels in the ground and get started on this project. That would have the school open fall of 2025. So both substantial completion and construction complete in July, and then the school would move in and start in August. So as Steve mentioned, it's a challenging market. We're no different than any other construction manager in this field. And so I think the one thing that separates this team from others is our ability to work together. And Steve mentioned that on value engineering and working through some of the challenges with that and not sacrificing the educational opportunities of the school, but looking at things that we consider low-hanging fruit, things that aren't district standard. That was the first thing that we went after. We didn't touch program or anything that would impact the classroom setting. So the sum of that value engineering, just over $3.5 million, we were able to shave off of that initial GMP, which would bring our GMP amendment at $68,543,040, including our preconstruction services. That brings a total of that construction cost to $68,775,400.
With that, that concludes our presentation. Will it address any questions that you might have?
Are you starting shoveling on Friday if we approve it?
Not that quick.
Tomorrow.
No, we need to. Mr. Tatum?
Traffic question, imagine that. So I know when I drive onto McNeil, the serpentine thing there, I have an F-150. Not the biggest truck in the world, not the smallest truck in the world. But I actually can't get around some of that serpentine thing without kind of my back tire going up on the curb there. So we've mitigated that problem. Do you think there's any issues there? I mean, I don't expect semis to be able to go around there, but, you know, people with pickup trucks and stuff. Hopefully, there's enough, the serpentines, the turns are big enough so that, you know, normal pickup trucks and big SUVs like Escalades can get around there.
Yes, sir. We do. We reckon it. So you're talking about onsite.
Yeah.
We're doing onsite. So yes, on the bus side, which there are receiving, you know, trucks for deliveries and things like that. So that's, there's code-driven minimum turning radiuses that we have. So that's kind of a, and you can drive large, you know, SUVs if you need to over there. On the car side, yes, we take it into account. We plan for large vehicles, like SUVs are pretty common, or trucks, pickup trucks. So I couldn't tell you the minimum radius right offhand.
It's 48 for a fire truck.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah, exactly. So.
And we have crosscuts for fire trucks for emergency vehicles. So if there's a car line, you could jump ahead and get in.
So you're confident that if, you know, a normal size pickup, a Suburban, those type of things can get around the serpentines without the back wheel hopping up on the curb?
Yes, because, as Emmett said, it's because, you know, part of that, part of that car loop, you know, we overlay a, you know, fire rescue, you know, vehicles going on that. But once you get off of that car, the actual drive, and you're in the parking lot, we also overradius, oversized those, knowing that we're not dealing with small cars, you know. So it's within the park, like when you're within the parking lot as well, you have more generous turning radiuses.
And you all may wonder, man, this guy's really concerned about traffic. But again, I look at myself as the, what would be the right word? The protector of the public funds and certainly make sure they get the best customer service that they can. So I'm imagining this parent, and they drive to this cool new school that we just paid $70 million, and they're driving, they're like, oh, this is beautiful, and look at the playfields, and it's awesome. And it just looks really nice, you know? And then they get into the little serpentine, and they're like, I can't, you know, and I don't want that to happen. I want it to be the $70 million beautiful school, that those little, what would you call it? Little irritating things that may not be that big a deal, but it's the icing on the cake. There you go. So that when we do produce a new product that costs $70 million, all those little things have been thought about. And the parent does drive onto campus the first day and go, wow, somebody really, this is awesome. I got what I think I should get for my tax money. You know what I mean?
We like to say that we take, we tried every corner to take the friction out, right? So as an administrator, as a teacher, as a student, as a parent dropping off, that when you're driving, you're not having to navigate tight turn lanes. When you're in the school, there's, you know, we exceed SEPTED, you know, visibility, safety and security where we can. And just make, try to put ourselves in the, truly, we talk about this from day one, the day in the life of a student, staff, and a visitor, really, to kind of understand how this site and how this school is gonna function easier, take that friction out of it, because they have so much more to focus on, right? Right? So to your point, we understand it. We get it. And we try to mitigate as much as we can based on our collective experience and just trying to put ourselves in the shoes of those that are gonna be on site. So, yeah, great point.
That's great.
Traffic's huge. Traffic is huge.
Right. And, you know, my last comment then will be, why can't we do that for the, in general, and I'm kind of directing this to all of us here, why can't we do that same thing for the last project? You know, maybe there are reasons, well, we didn't need a traffic study, we didn't have any extra students, we didn't have new student. Okay, whatever. I just want to give the best customer service we can to the parents. And if we could build a turn lane and make it a little easier for everybody, then we could. But that's really not your problem. I'm just, I'm kind of talking to the public right now, you know? We shouldn't, if, I came up with this analogy in my mind. It was like, let's say that there's flooding in my yard, right? And I look at it and I say, I need to fix the flooding problem. Whether or not it's gonna rain anymore or not, I still need to fix the flooding problem in my yard, you know? So if there's a traffic problem at a school, whether or not we're gonna increase the number of seats in a school, there's still a traffic problem that we could try and address if possible. And I know we extended the lane there, but I won't drone on because that's the last project. But I'm trying to get my last little points in.
Every site is different.
Yes.
For sure.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time.
Ms. Bessner?
I wanted to make sure I understood what you had said. That I understood that you, you're building out the core to accommodate a new building in the future. Did you state that the utility portion will be done now so that if there's portables or a future building, that that will already be put in, or that needs to be done later?
Let me clarify that. It's a great question. So we put a conduit in and basically a box for supporting portable classrooms. But nothing has been, is gonna be put in for a future classroom addition. Because we have, we have some space back there that, and that building could be a one-story, could be a two-story, it can rotate 90 degrees, and we don't know exactly, we could guess right now, I could show you a plan, where the electrical room would go, but that might change. So we don't want to, we don't want to spend your money, you know, too far in advance for that. But the conduit, we know from experience, and you know from experience on a lot of schools, the, you know, need for portable classrooms. So we do run that conduit out there.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
It's pretty minimal, but it's an extra step that helps in the future.
It was a course that we gave to them to provide a space for potential new classroom.
Yeah. But does that make sense? They're kind of two separate issues. Yeah. And they need, and they need two different places too, obviously, because the portables come. And you get to the point, you know, I think we have 10, 10, so that's 220 kids. And then you're just like, okay, now we're exceeded that. We need to do a classroom addition. Well, we're gonna, we have to keep the portables in place. And we put the classroom addition in, and then hopefully take the portables out.
Okay. So wherever you're placing the conduit is not the plan of where you're gonna put this new wing then?
That's correct.
Interesting. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'm excited about this one, too.
Good.
We're elated. We're elated.
Thank you. Thank you for the synonyms. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Ms. Foreman?
Yeah. Well, Mr. Tatum's worried about the big trucks. I'm worried about the little. Anything to accommodate golf carts? Life is different in that part of the county.
Yes, we do. We have an area that we've got paved to handle golf carts in that area. We didn't show it in the presentation that we have there. But in our site plan, we do have accommodations to park golf carts for kids to drop off. For parents to drop the kids off and pick them up. So we've accounted for that in our overall.
Drive-in or actually parking out as well?
They can actually come in and park the golf carts, drop the kids off, and go out.
Oh, okay. Okay. So the kids aren't gonna keep their golf carts at school? The neighborhood, does it have sidewalks? Will it have sidewalks?
Yes. From what we had was conversations with Neil, there will be sidewalks that connect to the ones that we're putting out as well.
There's a 10-foot wider sidewalk on the south side of the North River Ranch Trail Road. That's just in south.
I'm gonna drive my golf cart over and take a look at it when it's open.
Go on, drive. Ms. Gray?
This is more for the board. And I know we have a policy. When do we get to start the naming? I mean, I know it was a, when they did Parish Community, it was a process to go through. I keep calling this, is this North County Middle? It's not been adopted, but we keep calling it that. So that was just, that's really, because I like this, use the same design, a little different flavor here and there, I think is saving the taxpayer and dollars, and we're gonna still get a great school. So, but that was my thing, North County.
Dr. Weisong?
Yeah.
That name is just a general placeholder that describes a quadrant, and that's about it. We certainly will go through that process. There are also more discussions to have about the programming and some of the unique possibilities. Candidly, the focus has been on getting the property closed and in our possession so that Willis Smith can start turning dirt right away, because we have a really tight timeline to get this done. So once we know that they're underway, then we'll turn to some of the programming and structure pieces, and then we'll be building out that timeline for the board.
Okay. Starting February 24 is only two days. Seriously, it's only two days, it's only two days away. So, yeah, I'm excited for this as well. I do know that we've seen a lot of, a massive amount of growth in that region of our county. So, and having the foresight of doing the two electrical, one for portable, one for classroom addition, I think is, well, it comes with your guys' expertise. So I'm glad that you're doing that, because you never know. We don't know. It's gonna be housing from Manatee County line to Hillsborough County line. I'm fear, you know, with everybody coming down, but I'm happy with the plan. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Brings us to our next report presentation, which is the Fast Progress Monitoring II for reading. Mr. Jackson?
Chairman Cho, Board members, Superintendent Weisong. As you know, in the middle of February, all of our schools administered the PM2 ELA assessment. That's the second progress monitor for the Florida Fast Progress Monitoring assessment that ultimately culminated at the end of the year with PM3.
We got it in front of us, so.
Okay. Then I'll go through the slides online while they work on that. So kind of skipping towards Slide 3, as we've talked about in past data presentations, PM1 and PM2, PM1 administered at the beginning of the year, PM2 administered halfway through the year, is really the halfway point progress monitor of how our students are progressing towards the end-of-year benchmarks. And so students are taking an assessment that is aligned to what they're expected to know at the end of the year. And PM2 is given at the halfway point in the year. And so this is kind of our benchmark halfway through. And so students who score Level 3 or on grade level or higher are already showing mastery of end-of-year standards at the halfway point in the year. But this is a kind of a way for us to kind of gauge progress and then make adjustments for the second semester in order to best support all of our students. Oh, here we go. Thank you very much. And so again, we just always include this language from the parent guide for understanding FAST that this is an informational assessment that we use to help tailor instruction for our students and support our schools. And for the ELA assessment, the reading assessment, this really hits four reporting categories as part of our school-grade components. Those blue boxes on the left-hand side of Slide 4. So we have a reading achievement, which is just your total proficiency, your learning gains, your learning gains of the lowest quartile, as well as a new category for this year, third-grade reading achievement, which is a new piece that really emphasizes that push in early literacy, right? Trying to get students to be more successful by the time they're in third grade. This is the overview for elementary. So this is kind of the really high-level report that shows in third and fourth and fifth grade, the state distribution and performance on the assessment, as well as all of our schools in the school district of Manatee County. The PM2 Level 3+ column shows the total percentage of students that scored a Level 3, 4, or 5, which would be considered on grade level. And again, that would be already showing grade level understanding just halfway through the school year. And one of the things when we look at a report like this is just, because this is such a large, big-picture view of the data, you know, are we keeping track with the state? Are we making adequate progress? Are we seeing the things we expect to see? And what is the distribution of our students in the different levels of the assessment, 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5? We also visualize the data by disaggregating it by district-operated and our charter schools. And you can see that all schools in Manatee County are making progress. And you can see that all schools in Manatee County are making progress. And at elementary, I think our focus on early literacy is paying dividends. And you can see strong growth from PM1 to PM2 in third and fourth and fifth grade. And we have a slide later in the presentation that adds a little extra context to that and kind of connects it to historical data. For 6th through 10th grade, you can see again our state and all school district, all, all schools in Manatee County comparison. At all grade levels, we're making progress from PM1 to PM2. Again, you see variance in the grade levels compared to the state. And then at this slide, where you see a comparison of the district and charter-operated schools, you see at all grade levels, again, progress from PM1 to PM2 and the number of students who are already meeting those grade level expectations. But on this slide, compared to what we've seen in math, you know, K through 12, as well as our elementary ELA, you see a greater discrepancy in some of the performance in certain grade levels between the state and the district-operated schools, or, yeah, the state and the district-operated schools. And so obviously, when we, we see these types of indicators in the data, that's when our curriculum team, our executive directors, our school principals, Evan McCarthy, who does an amazing job compiling this data for us and coming up with, you know, trends, helping us identify opportunities to work on, starts kind of analyzing it and digging into the nitty-gritty to see what we need to take action on. And so after poring through this data, we, we started coming up with, you know, root cause analyses and doing some action planning to address where we see these gaps from PM1 and PM2 between the district-operated and state schools. And one of the most interesting pieces of data that came from that analysis is actually what this, this chart you see on the left here, which is the average testing time by school type and level. So you can see at elementary, we actually, you know, students in a charter school and students in district-operated schools took about the same amount of time on the test. But when you move into middle and high school, you actually see a growing disparity in the amount of time students took on the test itself. And Mr. McCarthy did an analysis, and that little text box underneath that table shows that for every, you know, kind of with a baseline of 70 minutes, student scores decrease every minute below 70 minutes of test time. So if you're a student who took 60 minutes to take your test, you score two points lower on average than your peers who took 70 minutes. If you only took 50 minutes, you score four points. If you took 40 minutes, you score 10 points lower than your peers who took 70. And if you took the test in 30 minutes, you actually score 23 points lower than your peers who took the.
Analytics.
Exactly. And like I said, Mr. McCarthy does an amazing job disaggregating enormous amounts of data from the state and, and helping our, our teachers and administrators and our district leaders understand it so we can take action on it. And so from this, as well as, you know, just a school-by-school analysis, we've, we've kind of compiled some of the following action steps. You know, our new executive director of school improvement is, we've had a couple of our targeted Title I middle schools assigned to her for weekly supervision and check-ins. Other focus schools have been assigned to members of our leadership team for increased supervision. We're going to be doing bi-weekly data monitoring and review of these focus schools during the second semester. And we're going to be planning for some increased assessment-based preparation, kind of specifically looking at this testing time gap. Are we best preparing our students for this, for this assessment? Are we, are we putting them in the best position to succeed? And then, of course, our curriculum department does an outstanding job preparing common assessments, fast-practice materials, and other, other tools that teachers can use to deploy in their classrooms to prepare them for the PM3 at the end of the year. And so we'll be taking these steps to start working with our secondary schools to help address some of these discrepancies in the data. One of the things that's been really hard as we've transitioned to FAST has been the, how do we compare one year to another? How do we compare old FSA to FAST? How do we compare non-retrofitted data to retrofitted data? And, you know, with the importance on literacy here in Manatee, we thought, you know, is there an opportunity to look, are we, are we making progress? Are we, are we making gains to where we want to be? And so one of the things we looked at was, when you kind of look at those, that big-picture data and the state versus how our district is performing, if we look at the gap on PM2 last year between the state and Manatee, and then the gap on PM2 this year between the state and Manatee, are we gaining ground or are we losing ground across grade levels? And I think you can see from the table on the right that in all grade levels, and particularly in, in early elementary, which is where a lot of our science of reading is focused right now, we're seeing those, that narrowing of the gap at all grade levels. And so this visualization actually really, I think, supports the hard work that our school leaders, that our teachers, and that our students are doing in class in making literacy a priority and, and working hard on increasing their performance in this area. And again, with that focus on early literacy, we thought we'd break out the third-grade data, because that is its own reporting category this year, for a more detailed view. And so this is, this table on slide 11 is the reading results in third grade. And so at the very top, in the darker blue bar, you see the, the total third-grade total. And then the first two kind of aggregated bars show students who were enrolled in the district last year, so students who were with us last year and with us this year. And you can see they're 39% on grade level currently, which matches our district average. But if you look at students who were enrolled in the district since VPK, those students are 51% on grade level already at PM2. You can also have data for our ELL and SWD subgroups, which are priorities of our student services department. And I also included this bottom line here that shows for students who are chronically absent from school. So that's 10% of the days out of school or more, they only perform at 28% relative to their peers on grade level. So again, stressing the importance of being at school.
SWD, I'm sorry to interrupt you. SWD.
Students with disabilities. And English language learners. And again, kind of, you know, when we saw that VPK data, that really stood out to us, right? For students who stayed with us, one of the resources available through the Florida Department of Education is the Know Your Schools website, where you can go to actually look at school-based data in detail. And this is Manatee County's data about third-grade ELA assessment. This is historical data, so this is not tied to this year's PM2, like the data we just looked at. But this shows year by year over history, the top bar for each year is the number of students who attended, like the, the scores, the average score for students who, I'm sorry, the number of proficient students who attended and completed VPK, right? The second bar is for students who attended but did not complete VPK. And the third bar is, was not found in VPK. They didn't attend VPK. And so this shows that the percentage of students who scored on grade level on that third-grade ELA assessment, based on whether or not they enrolled in VPK and whether or not they completed it. And again, I think you can see that compelling trend that matches what we see in PM2, which is students who went through our VPK programs here in Manatee County are very successful in third-grade reading. Like we did with math, we're, we're, we did a deep dive into the PM2 data with principals at the January 24th leadership meeting. We're continuing to push that data out to principals, and our executive directors are meeting with their principals to take action on that data. We've modified our school support schedule, like I mentioned, to prioritize schools where we're focusing on certain data we'd like to see improved by the end of the school year. We're doing that assessment prep. We're adding additional professional learning opportunities for teachers. And we're going to be doing student-level data reviews by school as well. And of course, PM3 is, just to give the community and, you know, notification, the PM3 will be administered May 13th through 17th. So schools are going to be working basically between now and that date to make sure we cover the remaining grade level standards for this year in each grade level, as well as do review and practice for students preparing them for that final assessment at the end of the year. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
I just want to say, thanks for the presentation, and thanks for sending this earlier. I looked at it earlier. And so I love breaking down the third grade to, are they with the district last year? You know, absentee, things like that. I don't know where we were at, Dr. Weisong. You and I were talking about that, you know, with who, who are they coming from with districts, et cetera. So individual teachers can get to this depth as well, correct? Can, like, what I mean by that is, more specifically, not necessarily where they're here last year and all that. But the absentee hits home. Can they look at, at their data? When they, when they are, when they're able to look at it, are they able to look to see, hey, Chad's been absent more than 10% of the time? This is where he falls under that no, you know, or I'm, I'm not, you know, proficient. Can they see that data?
Absolutely. There's a few different ways we do that. The teachers have the, the standards-based data through their, their portal. But when it comes to those, those types of indicators, like chronic absenteeism, right? We have, you know, kind of an early warning dashboard that schools can use. And then the assessment department also creates spreadsheets that schools use and teachers use to, to identify students who may be more at risk of, you know, not making grade level.
I mean, I think obviously if, if, if I'm, if I know a student is struggling with this particular standard, I go back and see they were absent that week or whatever, that's, that's big. Is sixth grade, I think I did my math correctly, is sixth grade COVID third graders? They were in COVID third grade and missed half the year? Or is that fifth grade?
No.
Or seventh grade?
Fifth grade. That's four years back, so it would be, sixth grade would have been second graders, right?
Okay. Okay, so it's the seventh graders who were COVID third graders? Okay. All right, I, I mean, I'm just, I'm just wondering, because those numbers seem to be a little bit lower. And so I, you know, there was missed, there's missed opportunities there, of course. My last thing, too, with, with high school. You know, these students now, once they hit high school, they've now been in, and done these, these, these tests two, three times a year for 10, 12 years. I mean, it just gets, I, I personally feel like, and this is from kids who are in high school, there's a exhaustion with these tests. There is a point to where, you know, I'll be, like, they're done, right? Like, and these, I mean, I, I think my kids are good kids, and, you know, they may be taking dual enrollment things, and they're done with it. Like, they don't, and so how do we, and I don't think, I just don't know the answer for that, for the fatigue, right? How do we combat that? I don't know. I don't, I don't have the answer for that, right? I don't know if any of us have the answer for that, but it's just interesting.
I think, I think the, the test time data we looked at kind of supports some of that.
Right? They're like, done. Like, I don't want to deal with this, you know? Yeah. The test time, that data was, was, that's pretty amazing. Like, that's, that's huge. And, and so, you know, just bring awareness to the student to say, look, you know, take your time. Yeah. Test-taking strategies. Mr. Tatum, you're going to speak?
Yes, thank you. That was informative. So yes, on, on slide number nine with those testing times, I just want to make sure that I understand what exactly this chart is trying to show me. So it seems pretty obvious, but it's just astounding to me. So if you spend 60 minutes on the test, you're, you're down by 60 minutes. Let me see, students score, scores decrease every minute below 70 minutes of testing time. So from 70 to 60, you lose two points. If you spend 20 less minutes, you lose four points. If you spend 30 less minutes, you lose 10 points. And if you lose, if you spend 30 less minutes, you're down 23 points. Is that what that's trying to say?
Correct.
Did I say that correctly? So what could we do to incentivize the students to, I mean, I understand Mr. Cho's point, you know, hey, this, you know, do your best and pay attention, but is there any incentive that we could give them? Such as, you don't want to redo third grade or something like, I don't know, not scare them, but I'm just wondering what kind, help get the parents involved, let them talk to the kids. And I, and maybe we do, I don't know. I'm just trying to, you know, use some little psychology here. How do we, how do we get them to focus and really take this seriously? Any thoughts on that? That's why you're the deputy superintendent of instruction. You're supposed to have all the answers. So I'll let you give us all the answers.
I mean, I agree with you, right? I think education is a big piece of that. Not just education on the content of the exam, but education on the, the strategies to attack the exam well. And then educating our, our students and parents on the kind of long-term importance of the series of exams. And just making sure that our students feel prepared, they come in in the right mindset, they slept well before. I mean, you know, there's, there's a lot of factors that are, that are inside of our control, some factors that are outside of our control in our schools. But the, I think anything we can do to help create the conditions for success on the test, the environmental conditions, and then, you know, the, the preparation for students, I think can help mitigate some of what we're seeing in this table.
Do, do we do anything? And I don't know, again, these are ideas I have in my head, but maybe they don't sound good when we actually play them out in practice. But, you know, an email to all the parents, hey, two weeks prior to these tests, hey, PM2 is coming up in two weeks, you know, we just want to make you aware of this. You know, it's really important that you have your child in school on this day and that, that they're rested and, you know. So, so that, you know, maybe the teacher tells them, I don't know, it happens on a Wednesday, and the teacher tells them on a Monday, hey, be here on Wednesday. And the parents are like, well, gee, we were, you know, we're all going to a concert, we're all going to a Disney show that night. And no, that's not the night to go to a Disney show. Tuesday night's not the night, you know? Plan that on another day, please. And giving, like, a building up with the parents, I don't know, a week or even a month prior, say, hey, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming, so that when the day quote-unquote of the game arrives, everybody's, do we do anything like that or not, you know, or?
I know our schools send some communications, but I'd have to dig a little deeper to see the nature of them. But I, I think it's a point well made that, you know, maybe if we have a coordinated approach to communication, it could, could assist students in being in that right mindset on the day of the assessment.
It's game day, you know, it's the big buildup. It's like, it'll be two weeks between, well, it's two weeks from today to the Super Bowl, right? So everybody, the, the team, is there working on, it's game day, it's game day. We're not doing anything else tonight before? You're all going to bed, you know? Anyway, that kind of idea. And then the last question I had for you, and again, I don't want to cause too much work for people. Could we go to slide number 11, please? How much work would it take to reproduce this slide for all grade levels? We, we just, we start testing in grade three, is that right? Or do we do it in 1 and 2, too?
So.
1 and 2 have a different test or something?
Yes, K1, 2 use a different test. They use the STAR early literacy and the STAR reading. We'll start bringing some of that data to you eventually. That, that test has had a little more flux from its initial rollout to now. And it, and it doesn't factor into the school grade. So we, we felt much more confident in, in showing this data to you while some of the other data was ironed out. But we'll eventually get to K1 and 2.
So what would it, would it be feasible without too much work to reproduce this chart on page 11 for? It says third grade, so third through 12?
We could provide that for you.
I would like to see that, please. That would be interesting for me. No, it is interesting for me at least to see this broken out by children enrolled in, you know, for a long time in the school district. It shows that VPK is an absolute necessity, which is, that's one of our priorities we talked about at the workshop, which just makes sense. The, as a language teacher myself, the earlier we expose children to good language learning, the quicker they're going to pick it up, no doubt about that. As we would expect, ELL students are going to struggle. And then, yeah. That, I would just, it would just be interesting for me, please, as long as it's not too, too much work, to have this chart reproduced for grades 3 through 12.
We absolutely can.
And maybe the other board members are like it, too. I don't know, but I would.
I'll provide that to all the board members.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jensen. Those are all the questions that I have. Thank you.
So there was only 582 of our third graders that were enrolled in the district since VPK. I mean, that's an extremely low, low number compared to the total.
And I mean, these are, these are students who, who were enrolled in VPK. We have that data on. They stayed with us through.
Right, through.
And so when you kind of look at the, the state historical data, that kind of aggregates it across students and they'll paint a little bit of a different portrait potentially going forward. This is for students who took this PM2 and had stayed with us the whole time. Yeah. And so some of the students who maybe moved in and out of a couple of different schools may not have been caught, or, you know, students in a VPK program in another district. So I think, again, we'll, we eventually will get a data release that, that gives us even a clearer portrait on that, kind of a historical view. But we wanted to give you a, you know, up to the minute, this is like, you know, action, action news.
You may not know this off the top of your head, but does every elementary school provide VPK? We don't, do we?
The sites.
Percentage of that? I mean, I don't know.
So we have different sites at different schools. We, we try to organize them throughout the district and we, uh, they're really grounded in school capacity. Um, you know, what, what space is available at those sites and the ability to offer services there.
Ms. Forman?
Yeah, um, slide number six. Um, where you say that, show the charter schools. Uh, are those charter schools in Manatee County only?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Um, and then on the testing time, did we evaluate testing time for PM one? And this, this, you know, applies to the, the idea of test fatigue, you know, they're going to be more excited on PM one than they, and more enthusiastic than they will be on PM two and PM three, forget it.
I could certainly get that data for you.
Okay, I, I actually, I'd like to know what the test, test time was on PM one and then on last year's PM three.
Absolutely.
Uh, to see if, you know, it, it is fatigue the real, the real culprit there. Okay, um, how many students do we have in VPK now? Oh, sorry.
Can I just add, Ms. Forman, this is, um, this is new analysis. Um, we're, we're really, um, we're getting this to the board very, very quickly because the schools really just finished this testing at the end of the week prior. The data turned around. We went, um, overtime in cabinet last Thursday, um, churning through all of this. Um, and, um, and then, um, a lot of work was done overnight. Thursday night, we came back together Friday morning and, and then all, you know, started testing all these theories. So, you know, we're, we're putting all of this out there quickly so that, you know, we're, you know, accelerating conversation. But we really haven't even yet gone school by school to talk with principals about their implementations and some of the root causes of the testing time differences. So again, schools that use the whole window, are their testing times higher than schools who said, nope, we're doing all of this in one day? And, you know, we're, we're going to get it done. So there's a lot more root cause to be done on this. Um, but obviously the, the differences were so dramatic, um, that we think there's a lot here, but we don't have all the answers yet. I, I just wanted to point, we, we even talked about putting this off until February, till, till the next board meeting. But then the data is already two weeks more stale. So we're, we're giving you all the information, but all the root cause analysis isn't done yet. So I just wanted to point that out.
Um, is it, is the data available for PM one on test taking?
We, we can get it. I don't think we've processed it yet because we're, we're still looking at this again and looking at that.
Mr. McCarthy's got his hands full, you know, some, someday, you know, don't worry about it, you know, but.
Well, now I'm interested, so.
Okay, all right. Um, and then, uh, the, uh, how many students do we have in VPK typically every year?
I don't know that number off the top of my head. I'd have to follow up with you on that.
Well, we've got 582 on, you know, um, okay, all right. I, I would like to know that. And then, um, when we count them as VPK and enroll, enrolled in the district since VPK, are we? Can, including the private VPKs?
So the good news is Evan McCarthy is listening to this meeting right now. And so, um, he's taking notes and when I follow up with some of the data requests.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make sure that he adds a little extra context to, you know, what, what students may or may not have been included in that, um, end right there.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. It's really interesting.
Yeah.
And insightful data. I appreciate it.
No, thank you.
Ms. Frey?
Slide number 10. Um, there's a lot going on on this slide. I just want to understand that. The chart on the left to the chart to the right. If I look at third grade, uh, PM two, it says minus four on the chart on the right. And that's the comparison between the chart on the left, if I'm doing my math right here. Um, my, my whole thing with this, all of these ELA results is we had a public commenter talk how we are so bad at reading and how, um, what we need to do in providing materials and all of that. So, so this, this is a lot on this chart to me. Compared to the state, which is at, I'm guessing that 35% is to the standard. Even going back to the other pages, um, levels one through five on chart five. If you go there and you look, third grade is at only 6% level five and 35% is at level one. And then the PM two is showing 40%, and then we're down one. So this is the, my message through all of that jabbering is we have to start focusing on getting these level ones to threes. That is my whole goal of, we've got to get more of the level ones to the threes. Because I think once, and, and that may happen at VPK to, to, you know, third, third grade. But we got to get, I mean, I'm looking at fifth, you know, fifth graders. Even they are way down in a 28% at level one. And we don't have how many students, the other, last year, if I remember, I looked at that chart, it showed how many students we tested. Or we still have that data, correct? Right, I think I was sifting through some of this last week. If, if I didn't get this, it was a math one. Um, how many students we tested per school was very helpful. Uh, I'm sure he's listening, of course, he's listening. I'm sure we can get that too. But that's a lot of data to go through and when you're doing data, you can get lost in it, to be honest with you. Um, but that one slide was a little, okay, I see now, we're, we're actually chained over in third grade. Plus three, but we were down four. So we're still minus point one, uh, minus one. Am I reading that correctly?
Correctly. So focusing on third grade, which is, if we look at the left-hand table.
Right.
Um, last year in 22, 23, at, at this point last year. The state was, the, this 35% of the students were on grade level in the state and 31% of the students in Manatee were on grade level.
Right.
This year.
We're up.
The state is at 40%. So the state went up five percentage points. We are at 39% and so we went up eight percentage points. So we actually closed the gap with the state, um, almost completely. And we went up three points relative to the state, which is kind of what that table on the right-hand captures.
I just wanted to clarify that, uh, for, for people, and I was looking at the wrong, I was looking at 23, it's the bifocal thing here. So, yeah, I just wanted to point that out, that. Our goal should get level one to level three. And I think once student get, once students get to level three, they're going to blossom on their own. Uh, and when I look at the chart with the readers in high school. Where that chart is, even those, the number there is not as high as I wished it were. Uh, fifth grade is at, uh. Forty-two percent, 30% at, uh, PM, uh, level one and only 7% at level five. So it's that, I, I'm not asking for miracles, I want just the middle. Let's just get everybody to the middle and then you go on to the next slide where it goes into the high school. Again, 7% of 10th graders are only at le- at level five and 36% are at the, um, level one. So I just want everybody to get to the middle of the ground here.
And as you.
And, and I know our, our teachers are working really hard. And, and I like the fact that you added students that are in VPK and those who were with us throughout the year and those who were not. I like that comparison because that gives us a, a good snapshot of, okay, we just got this student halfway through the year maybe and they may have just moved to our community in a district that's a lot worse than ours, uh, whatever, or not as good as ours, I'll say. And, and then I like this chart on 12 to Mr. Chair Choats, uh, showing how, uh, the VPK and the third grade reading levels. It all starts with early, early, early readers and early learning in the home and/or in a structured, uh, facility. So I know I rambled, but I just wanted to point those out, that I like the data. And I do, would like to see the students that we tested, how many at each school? That's what I look at. Okay, we only tested 700 students, that's a lot of students. But then that gives us, it gives me the gauge, okay, last year we tested 800 students. So of the 100 difference, where were we in level one to five? That's just looking at the data.
I can follow up with some data that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a lot.
Numbers of students.
It is, okay.
Mr. Frey?
Yeah, uh, I'll try to be brief, but, uh, I was debating whether I was going to make a comment or not. But I just really appreciated so much that was presented here and it really does bring a lot of really interesting and thought-provoking ideas that it sounds like you guys are really going to dive into to figure out best ways to move forward. And, um, so I really appreciate that, um, that you're looking at it from so many different angles and considering, um, so many different pieces. I, I, I do really appreciate, um, slide number five. Um, if only for the fact that it shows the movement from, from PM one to PM two. Because that's, that's really, to me, like, you can't look personally. I find it hard to compare what was PM two last year. This is a different group of kids, but these are the same kids. And so if you're comparing from PM one to PM two in, of the same cohort, to me, that's far more telling about the effectiveness of what's going on in our schools. So I really appreciate that. Um, I, I think that that's a really important piece to focus on is. But look at how much movement the district has made in just those few months. And in those few months, it's been up 16% in third grade. I mean, that's, that's a large movement for, when we're talking about thousands of students. So I, I just, I really want to say how, how wonderful that is. I agree, I, I will always want a higher number, I'm with you on that. But I think there's a lot of other factors that the other data really highlights and amplifies. And, um, there are some things that no matter what you try to do, there are some things you, you're not going to be over, be able to overcome to make it 100% or whatever, you know, it's just. So I, I, I guess, I, and the other thing I want to point out with this data is comparing PM one to PM two is even a hard comparison because they changed what the numbers even meant, right? So then you had to retrofit the data from PM one to PM two. So, because I know, like, I have a third grader, which I also wanted to respond to the thing you, the comment you made about, you know, being notified. I can only speak for me, my children's teachers email us every single week and say, this is what we're doing. PM two is coming up on this day. We're going to take the test, make sure they have a good breakfast. I, and I don't really want the information a month in advance because I'd probably forget, but like a week in advance, like, that's good. Because then I go, oh, wow, like, hey, you need to eat something real nutritious today, not like sugary muffins, right? Okay, so, you know, um, I, I, I don't, I, like I said, I can't say that that's not happening everywhere. I can say it's happening in my own personal experience. Um, but I just, not only is it hard to compare data from PM one to PM two now because they changed the whole thing. It's hard to even compare it from last year. So like, if we're comparing it from last year, but the, the validity was like, ah, hey, we're tested this thing out, Giddy Pig children, and now it's just. I value the data, but I also recognize all of the weaknesses in the data. And so it's important, and I'm not saying it's not important, but. There are so many more pieces that go into this. And so I do appreciate you taking it apart, Ms., I'm sorry, Mr. Evan, for taking it apart. He's the rock star here, let's be honest, all right? Um, and it's, and I think he's just getting more work as we're talking about this. But, but in this, but in the same respect, like. There's only so much time you can spend looking at all this data versus like creating a plan and actually doing it, right? Like, there's. I don't want to get bogged down in something, especially when I'm not convinced it's really an accurate measurement yet. Am I making myself clear? I don't know. Um, I do really appreciate all of this, especially the slide that everyone else has highlighted, which breaks down the different groups, like slide 11. I think that is very interesting and I think that's very telling and the stuff about VPK. But as a kindergarten teacher, I could have told you that. You didn't have to bake that graph. Like, I lived it. You could, kids buck into kindergarten and you could see the difference between a district-operated VPK student and everyone else. So that just, to me, speaks to that. So thank you.
Dr. Weisong?
If, if I can, if I can add to that while we're on that slide, Mr. McCarthy is watching at home because he's texting me answers to your questions. He's probably already started on his data requests as well. Um, that, that slide is just our, School District of Manatee County, VPK students does not include the private providers. Um, the, um, overall testing, um, percentage for PM two was 95%. At elementary, it was 98%. So those schools are really trying to get every piece of data possible. And, and I'll just, um, a couple of other points. Keep in mind that although this, this is a criterion reference test, meaning you're, you're drawing cut scores based on what you think kids should know. All of the analysis indicates that typically less than 10% of students are going to score at level five on a summative assessment in any grade level. So very few students finish at, at, at level five. Um, at level one, of course, this is PM two, so some of those students will move into level two and then even up to level three. When we talk from a strategic plan perspective, a- as we did last week. We really are, we really want to focus on at PM three, who's sitting at level one. And if, if the board wants to prioritize that aspect. That is, that is multi-year work. That is the grittiest work of school improvement. Um, and, um, again, as we discussed, it's a matter of resource alignment. Because the reality is when you look at students sitting in level one who don't move out of level one, it's disproportionately English language learners, students with disabilities and students who are chronically absent. So, and that's not surprising. Um, and so, um, um, that, that commitment to let's, let's move kids out of level one, that is the hardest of the hard work that our teachers do. Um, and, and, and so, um, I, I know that they're committed to that. The school visit that Chair Choats and I did this morning, um, uh, right at the end of the visit, I, I met the kindergarten team at Bay Shore Elementary and they were deep in their PM two data. And to Mrs. Messenger's point, they had all of their other data points that they had collected to say, does this make sense? Um, and, and if it all lines up, what's our next step at the student level? It was really impressive and, and our classroom teachers are working hard out there.
I do think some of the progress that we're seeing in third grade though comes from what we've done last three or four years, that we put emphasis on early learning and, and literacy and I think we see the fruit of that labor now. And to Dr. Weisong's point, it takes time, right, to build that up. So I don't see any other board members let up to speak, so thank you very much. I appreciate it. Um, moves us on to item number 12, which is the consent items. Superintendent Weisong?
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the consent agenda for the January 30th, 2024 school board meeting.
So moved. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Did you have a comment, Ms. Forman, or is that, oh, you were just up from.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's, that's, that's an oldie.
We got Granicus going? Yeah, okay. You want us to just vote by hand? All right, awesome. Uh, all those, which we have a motion and a second. All those, which we have a motion and a second, all those in favor of the approval of the consent items, raise your hand and signal aye.
Aye.
Seeing opposed, passes five to zero. We have no more public comments for new business. So that brings us into, I'm going to recess this regular meeting and open the meeting of the leasing corporation. So I called order the meeting of the Manatee County Leasing Corporation. Under the Articles of Incorporation, for the Manatee School Board Leasing Corporation, the members of the non-for-profit corporation are the members of the school board. The Articles of Incorporation provide that the board of directors, unless changed by the membership, are the members of the school board. The officers are the president, vice president, and secretary treasurer. The articles also provide that the chair of the school board is the president, the vice chair is the vice president, and the secretary treasurer is the secretary of the school board, which is the superintendent. So with that, we have new business under our Manatee Leasing Corporation, and that is item number one, the approval of First Amendment to Lease Schedule. And Superintendent Weisong, you have a recommendation?
Thank you, Chairman. As Secretary of the Leasing Corporation, I recommend approval of the First Amendment to the lease schedule number 2023A and partial release relating to the school board's certificates of participation, series 2023A.
So moved.
We have a, a motion by Ms. Bray.
I'll second.
And a second by Ms. Messenger. Dr. Weisong, you just want to just briefly just tell us what this entails?
Certainly. This is step two in a three-step process. You just completed step one with the approval of the consent agenda. And so this involves lining up the funds necessary to pay for the guaranteed maximum price for Blackburn Elementary. And so we are amending the COP certificates and getting the funding sources all lined up so that we can pay that bill.
I don't see any board members lit up to comment. So I'm going to adjourn this meeting of the Manatee School Board Leasing Corporation. And I'm going to reconvene the regular meeting.
Have to vote on that.
I thought we voted after it. Never mind. Go back into the Manatee Leasing Corporation. And it's up to vote on Granicus. And that is approved, five to zero. Now I will adjourn the leasing corporation meeting and reconvene the regular meeting. And board, do we need to take another break or no? Everybody good? Keep cruising?
Keep cruising.
Keep cruising. Okay. All right, new business, item number one. Superintendent Weisong?
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of Blackburn Elementary School Classroom addition and renovation. Agreement between the owner and A.D. Morgan. This is amendment two, the guaranteed maximum price in the amount of $35,164,840.25.
So moved. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Obviously, we were presented by this, this earlier today. Any board comments? I do not see anyone lit to comment. So I think we can go ahead and vote. On the approval of Blackburn Elementary, and that passes five to zero. Item number two, Superintendent Weisong?
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the annual comprehensive financial report and all official parts thereof for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2023.
So moved. I'll second.
We do have, once, one board member lit up, Mr. Tatum.
I would just like to make the comment, mostly for the general public, that this is obviously, to me at least, a big item, approval of the annual comprehensive financial report. It basically is a report that talks about the finances of the school system. And I would like the public to know that I believe all of us, but I know certainly myself, have taken the time to discuss this with the Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Sellers, to take a look at it and to then, you know, we have our auditors that are doing their work too. And so I am confident that the school system is in good financial shape. I think the piece, the people that we have doing our auditing as well as in our financial department have things in order. And so it, we made, we, I just didn't want this to go by with just, you know, an emotion and a second with no discussion about it. It's an important document. We are looking at it behind the scenes. We're not going to take a lot of time probably tonight to discuss it, but it is an important document. And I know I, at least as a school board member, am focused on it and I'm confident based on conversations with the superintendent as well as his financial and budget staff that the report is accurate. And then the last comment I'll make, that I asked this question, why has it taken so long since the fiscal year ended 30 June of 2023? And, and if I'm wrong, Ms. Sellers maybe can correct me, but there are just a lot of contracts and things that, even though the fiscal year ends, there are reports that get done, contracts that get paid out, and it takes a while to wrap all that up. And then finally get the, you know, the report done here about six months later, did I provide an accurate statement in that respect of why it takes about six months to get it out?
That is, and the annual financial report is actually a, a part of that act for, and it is actually due to a DOE in September, at the end of September. So it takes that long just to close the books, to be able to have to go to them. And then this act for has the extra pieces that get added to it to make it even a thicker piece of document. So to have it, the bulk of that work to have been done really by, in December, was very quick. It was a, a pretty, very efficient group doing it. The finance team led by Kathy Miley, they have it down to a very good set of procedures, checks and balances to be able to get there. So, so it does, it does seem like it takes a long time, but it, it was actually moving pretty quick, you know, in comparison to all of the data that does get put together and looked at.
Well, please pass along my congratulations to them for timely, efficient work, and it seems to be a, a very well put together report. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Foreman.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Ms. Sellers, do we still have to wait for the actuarial calculation of the, our share of the pension contribution for our retirement system?
We have to wait for that audit report to get delivered.
When does that come?
That sometimes comes beginning of October. So when we get that information, we, we put in a lot of it where we have a few items pending when the AFR goes up like in September. That also adds to an extra delay because you need that audit report and those numbers that, those pieces for Manatee County gets put into the comprehensive report. So yes.
And then we also have to wait on charter school financial reports?
We do, but we have Cherry Becker doing that for us. And like this past year, they actually will be getting started probably in March to, to get their information out, to do their internal control work at April and May, so that by the time the schools are closing, they're getting that information from them. So.
I'm talking about the charter schools?
Oh, oh.
They provide us.
Sorry, yeah.
With financial statements.
They do, and that gets a little bit dicey at the end because some of them do run to their own problems with their, their CPA firms that they hire to get those reports. But we work, we let them know, they understand that the district needs that information as well too. So we do, because we would not want to have any unaudited figures. And there has been times in the past this district did have to wait. We are in conversations, the district is in conversations with those charter schools to encourage their CPA firms to get it done in time.
We can't release ours until they provide us theirs.
Correct.
And that, yeah.
So we, we try to give them that deadline date.
There's a lot of reasons that we don't, that we can't do it right away.
Right, exactly. That was another good point.
Yeah, we're relying on others' people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I don't see any other members, board members lit up to comment, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the annual comprehensive financial report. That passes five to zero. Item number three, under new business, Dr. Weisong?
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the district's school internal accounts audit report for the year ended June 30th, 2023.
So moved. I'll second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any comment? I do not see any board comments on this. Dr. Weisong, you want to add anything?
And thank you to the team for all the work that happens and certainly to all of the bookkeepers at the schools.
Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the district's school internal accounts. That passes five to zero. Dr. Weisong, item number four?
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the revision of the job description of Assistant Director for Construction Services.
So moved. I'll second.
Dr. Weisong, you want to elaborate a little bit on this particular item?
Thank you, Chairman and board members. This is an existing job description that we are updating to bring current. This position was not budgeted for this school year. However, with the volume and the urgency of the construction projects, we do need the additional leadership support in the department. We do have a vacant planner position within facilities planning that has not been filled all year, and so we will use the budget savings from that position to fund the salary for the assistant director who's hired for the remaining of the year. And then if we see the need to continue the position, I'll present that as part of the recommended budget for next year. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, we can see there's a lot of construction stuff going on for sure. I don't see any board members lit up to comment, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the revision of the job description of Assistant Director, Construction Services. And that passes five to zero. That concludes new business items under item number 19. Moving on to item number 20, informational only, and we don't have any more public comment on item number 21, so item number 22, update. We'll start with the instruction update. Mr. Jensen, do you have any more to share with us?
I do, a few quick ones. Last week, as you know, was Celebrate Literacy Week, so I want to say thank you to all the volunteers and community members who spent time in our classrooms and reading to our students. It was a wonderful week. Schools produced fun activities that promoted literacy. For example, one school that I know about had a master mystery reader on the morning announcements every day, and the students had to play a game to try to guess who the mystery reader was. It was just a, a great time to promote literacy. This coming Saturday, we will have our elementary and secondary STEM Expo at MTC on Saturday the 3rd. The Gallery of Projects will be open to the public from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m., so you can come out and see some amazing student research and work there at MTC on Saturday. On Tuesday, February 13th, we're going to have the VEX District Robotics Tournament. And so that'll be running from 9:00 a.m. all the way to 4:00 p.m., and at 4:00 p.m. we'll have our awards ceremony. These are students who are, you know, working on teams to design these really amazing robots that compete against each other to score points. We also have our winter graduation at MTC on the main campus, February 1st at 6:00 p.m. Connecting to our prior importance of VPK and early literacy conversation, the VPK choice process begins February 5th and runs through February 16th. So any child who turns four years old by September 1st and has a valid VPK certificate of eligibility can, is eligible to participate in the VPK choice process. For more information, you can go to our website or contact the Early Learning and Family Support Team. Also, all are welcome to the Bradenton Reads, Bradenton Reads ribbon cutting on February 7th at 9:00 a.m. It's in front of City Hall and commemorates that we'll be placing 235 street pole banners that will display all throughout the city, celebrating literacy and, and helping families engage in the importance of, of literacy with their young readers. And then of course, from February 5th through 9th is National School Counseling Week with the theme Fired Up About School Counseling. So we'll be thanking our school counselors for all the incredible work they do in supporting our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rinaldi, operations?
Good evening again. I've got a couple items. On the human resources side, we did, had an operational job fair that was held at Wakeland on January 25th. Last week, we had 81 attendees and we were able to offer 12 positions. The custodial team had limited openings and they filled all their open positions within a matter of two hours, so that was good. Transportation interviewed eight candidates for driver positions and 14 for bus aides. They were able to make offers to two drivers who already had their CDL on the spot, and they made four other offers for individuals that are now pending to get their CDL permit. And they made six offers to bus aides. So transportation kind of did a pretty good job there. Last week, the training class for transportation had two drivers and three bus aides as well. Our next job fairs, we have one that's dedicated to transportation, and that's going to be at the Maskey Center on February 14th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and that will be at the Transportation Compound. Our next para and operation job fair is February 22nd, and that's going to be at Wakeland from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. And the big teacher in para job fair is coming up Saturday, March 16th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So we've got a number of John Fairs that are coming on board. Food service, food and nutrition service, they were notified this past week that they passed the USDA Required Summer Food Service Program Administrative Review with Zero Deficiencies. So they had a clean bill. The review included meal service and accountability, nutrient and menu compliance, as well as a comprehensive procurement review of their processes. This review happens every four years and, and is required by, the review is required by the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. So they got a very, very good report there. And then finally, I'd like to bring up, we had Mr. D'Amico, our Chief of Safety and Security. He was recertified by the International Association of Emergency Managers as a certified emergency manager. So he's a CEM, so he's recertified now. Based on his credentials, professional background, he became one of 2,400 people in the world that received this certification. So, pretty good. Congratulations, Paul, and thanks for everything Paul does for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Legal update. Mr. Dye, are you seeing anything?
Quick reminder for the chair and the superintendent to stay for a few minutes after we're done to sign the documents that were approved tonight on the bond financing. That's it.
Okay.
That's good. Superintendent Weisong?
Thank you, Chairman. Board members, thank you for your approval of the consent agenda tonight. There were 21 items that allow us to continue to do the routine business of the district. I want to highlight three items. First, you ratified my signature on an agreement with our Ask Me Bargaining Unit for an attendance incentive for our bus drivers and assistants and mechanics. So that's an opportunity for, for individuals who meet the criteria to earn, I believe, up to another $2,250 in the spring semester for, for strong attendance. And we're excited about that, and part of that is grant funded. In addition to all of the construction updates you got tonight on the consent agenda, you authorized me to finish the substantial completion process on the new building at Lakewood Ranch High, the new building at Southeast High School, and the new addition at Hale Middle. And we're excited that all of those facilities are, are up and running. And then finally, you approved the K through 12 science textbook adoption plan. That was not originally a planned process. As you know, we, we talked at the workshop last week about an opportunity to use non-general funds to get through this process and, and make those purchases. And so it's a lot of additional work on the team, but a very fiscally responsible decision. And so thank you to Mr. Jensen and Mrs. Fleming for putting everything in order to make that happen. Some other staff kudos, board members. I joined Mr. Tatum in thanking Ms. Sellers and Mrs. Malinak and Mrs. Miley, our, our budget and finance directors, for getting all of the work done on the reporting. It's a, a, a ton of work and we have a very small budget and finance staff, and they do a great job as evidence. It's a ton of work, and we have a very small budget and finance staff, and they do a great job, as evidenced by the audit reports. During the month of January, our schools all began using the new Florida Threat Management Model. That's the team process that our schools use when there is a concern about student well-being. That's a mandatory process, and last fall, we trained hundreds of employees to serve as members of these teams. We were a hundred percent in compliance. Prior to the holiday break, we had to be in compliance by January four, but we were all done. Thank you to Mr. D'Amico and all the different departments who made that happen. And then finally, we were notified at the end of last week by the Florida Department of Education that the School District of Manatee County is one-hundred percent in compliance with the constitutional class size mandate for first semester. Again, that is a multi-department effort. It starts with Darlene Black in, in our IT department, looking at enrollment and withdrawal daily. And then it's our principal supervisors and principals making the adjustments to keep our classes under the constitutionally required sizes. So we're proud that all of our district-managed schools are in compliance. We did have two charter schools that were out of compliance. They promptly completed the Required Corrective Action Plan, and those are being submitted as required. I have been out and about a lot the last couple of weeks, making visits to McNeil, Mona Jane, Lincoln, Palmetto Elementary, Enhi, Blackburn, Abel, Palmview, and then this morning, Bayshore with Chair Choat, followed by Harley. And then Vice Chair Spray and I will be at Blackburn and Tillman on Thursday. Again, we are, we are in the prime of the work, and it is just awesome to see the, our teachers and students working together. When I was at Harley today, I met Celeste Prazzo, an early learning specialist who retires tomorrow with thirty-nine years of service to the School District of Manatee County. So it was an honor to meet her, and congratulations, Celeste, and we wish you all the best. Coming up, Board, we have a workshop together on Friday that will include two updates that are tied to some of the strategic plan goals that we talked about. And then, in addition to School Counseling Week that Mr. Jensen referenced, February also kicks off CTE Month. And so all of our career and tech educators in our schools and at Manatee Technical, we appreciate you. We, in addition to the workshop on two-two, anticipate some shade workshops scheduling with you during the month of February. So we'll get that information out to you, but expect, Board members, a shade on security, a shade on cybersecurity, and a shade on collective bargaining as we put things in place for next year. And finally, I want to close with a personal thank you. This is Laura Eaton's final school board meeting with us. Mrs. Eaton, my assistant, is retiring. I am so grateful that she stayed on through the transition to keep everything in order, not just for my arrival, but for Mr. Rinaldi and Mr. Jensen and everybody else who changed seats here in the last six months. So Laura, thank you so much. We're going to miss you. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Senator. I don't know if we have a camera to get over there to see your face. Thank you, Dr. Weisong. Board comments, we're going Foreman, Messenger, Tatum, Spray, myself. So Ms. Foreman.
Just a reminder that I will be out of town, out of town the week of, February twelfth through that Friday, the twelfth is a Monday, for the cybersecurity and Greater Florida Consortium meeting in Tallahassee. So thank you for allowing me to go, and I'm looking forward to that. I thank the people who came to speak tonight. You know, obviously, I have a true concern about the library policy. I think I've shown that. But, and I, and in our conversation at the last meeting, it was suggested that we have another workshop to go through some of the things that I was proposing. And I have asked for that workshop, and it was, Mr. Jensen wisely said, why don't we wait until after legislative session? So, you know, it's, I'm not going away on this, you know. I mean, there's some things that we need to, to need, we need to, to take care of, and especially as it involves parental choice and their rights, so. And we had a good master board training session. We, that was our last one, and we are going to be the proud recipients of certified master board plaque coming up. And I think we all learned quite a bit, and this session was especially heavy on communications between the superintendent and the board. And, and I, it was, it was, it was very good. So I appreciate everyone participating. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Messenger.
I think, I think the only thing I wanted to highlight was for Celebrate Literacy Week last week, and I just wanted to say, you know, I really appreciated Palmetto Elementary inviting me, and I really enjoy just going and reading, and I think it's just a nice reminder of why we do what we do. And, and I saw other district administrators there, and they said, oh, if I could just start every day this way, you know. So it's just, it's just a nice reminder, so that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Tatum.
Okay, so since it's late, I will be brief. Yes, Ms. Eaton, you've always been pleasant and helpful every time I've interacted with you, so thank you for your service in the Manatee County school system. Well done, good and faithful servant. Thank you. And then as far as safety goes, just safety first, rushing around, I've noticed myself lately with traffic, I think I want to switch a lane to get over and get there fast, just slow it down. If you feel like you're rushed, slow it down, be safe. And then the final thing I just wanted to say is that, you know, lately, people have asked me, they'll say, how's that school board thing going, Mr. Tatum, or what do you think about that? And I just think to myself, there's not a lot that keeps me up at night, you know, and I think that's, that's good. If there are a lot of things that keep me up at night, then it's not going good. And so just a congratulations, you know, to Dr. Weisong and the staff. If there, things aren't keeping me up at night, then somebody must be doing a good job, and that's them. So that's the last comment I have. Thank you.
Ms. Spray.
Okay. Literacy Week, I was at Palmview, and it was character day, so everybody dressed in a different character. So I saw an array of outfits, even my escort to the classroom I was going to was a chef. So it was quite entertaining. So that, and tennis season is starting, so I want to thank Ms. Cox for getting the tennis schedules for me. I plan on going to watch practice at the different schools that I can, so I can offer pointers. That is one field I am well-versed in, so I will be doing that. And I do want to point out, too, that we also have an individual retiring that's twenty-four years from MTC that was a junior accountant. And to all of our people who choose to stay and contribute to our district is, it's, it's warming to see the dedication that people put in. When you do go to the schools and you reach to these kids, that's what we're all here for, and, and that's the reward. When you go to do those little events like that, that's the reward, like the MTC graduation coming up. That is the reward for the hard work that we do up here. So thank you, everybody. I just want to get on to my birthday.
I'll be real quick. The visit this morning to make sure elementary was fantastic. Just a lot of innovative ways that our kids are learning, and super impressed by the students and the concentration they had during the lesson. There was, I don't know, five or six of us walking into the classroom, and never did a teacher have to, you know, gather attention back again or anything like that. And I was an elementary school teacher, so I, you know, you deal with different things as an elementary school teacher, and I had the most admiration for any and every elementary school teacher that has ever done it. Because I know it can be like herding cats and things like that. So we've got some amazing teachers. I mean, I think we had, I forget who exactly it was, but this second-year teacher, and the way she was working phonics was like she had been there for decades. I mean, it's absolutely amazing. And some really great stuff going on in our schools, and I appreciate the invitation for that visit and the time that Ms. Lenny and everybody else gave us today. Other than that, great meeting. With that, happy birthday. We are adjourned. We'll see you Friday.